Fifth at 6:31. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Secretary is unable to attend this meeting, so the Second Vice Chair will assume that role. Will she please call the roll call, please?
Lou Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Lynda DeGray here. John Petronella.
Absent.
Francis Alamo absent. Joe Mueller absent. Ken Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo absent. Christian Dantonio.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Seeing that we have some regular members that are missing tonight, I will be seating the two alternates, Commissioner LaFakas and Commissioner Dantonio, as full-time members of the Aquifer Protection Agency tonight. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the May 25 meeting?
Still moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nick, are you going to abstain since you weren't at that meeting, or do you?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so let the record show that was five approvals with Commissioner LaFakas abstaining. Is there any public communications tonight? Anyone who'd like to come in front of the Aquifer Protection Agency to speak of something that's not on our agenda? Anyone? For a third time, seeing none. Public communications is closed. Any correspondence from Aquifer?
None to report.
None, none to report. Anybody commissioners? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda under New Business B. Discuss 2024 meeting calendar.
Thank you very much, Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adding 7B to the agenda tonight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimous to add item 7B, Discussion of the 2024 Calendar. Thank you. Moving on now, Madam Secretary, to New Business. It's okay. Take your time.
I gotta find it.
Yeah.
I don't have the public numbers. Just read it from the thing.
Yeah, just read it from the thing. Yeah, that'd be fine. It's okay.
Sorry, not used to this.
Here, right here.
I got the wrong one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
AR 267 Moody Road, applicant for Aquifer Registration Renewal. The A-45 and A-50 Aquifer, Dennis Lussard, applicant. Seven Moody LLC, applicant owner, MAP 75 lot 37, I-1 zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant representative present?
Yes, Jeff Lyndaquist here on behalf of Dennis Lussard.
Yeah, could you please sit down? Yeah, make sure the mic is on?
I'm gonna sit?
Yeah. Is the mic on? Is the red button on the mic?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, sounds good.
Press the button. Okay. I'm used to standing, but I'm happy to say.
Well, you can if you want, if the portable mic is working.
Fine, I'm just joking.
All right.
I'm an attorney. I typically stand when you speak, but it's nice to have a change of pace. So Jeff Lyndaquist here for Seven Moody LLC, Dennis Lussard manager. We're asking for a renewal of the regulated activities registration for the property at Seven Moody Road in Enfield. Property was initially registered in 2008. This is our fourth renewal, and I have to say that nothing much has changed since 2008. We still have a site that I believe complies with the registration and all the regulations, and we'd ask that the four registration items be renewed.
Thank you. Any questions? Staff, would you add some comments?
Sure. So as Mr. Lyndaquist had mentioned, the applicant has been here several times before to renew their registration. Nothing on site in regards to activities has changed. Activity L, production of electronic boards, electrical components, or other electrical equipment, is currently not active. However, they wish to keep this on their registration in case in the future they wish to conduct that activity again. On November 1, I did a site inspection of the subject property. The site was very well organized, very clean, hardly any mislabeled products, disorganization, no floor drains in the building. The only recommendation I had was to have the dumpsters relocated from the grass onto an impervious surface like the concrete. And since then, from my understanding, those have been removed. So that condition that I mentioned on my report, to have all the dumpsters on site relocated, can now be scratched off. They submitted all their requirements, DPH, deep, and the water company was notified a month in advance of this meeting. I received no comments back except from deep about the activity confusion, but we fixed that. It was just the wrong box checked off by accident. So they're just renewing A, L, T, and V.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant or staff? Quick question for you. So if on a motion to approve, should we mention removal of condition one?
Yeah, so my resolution is just a recommendation. If you decided you did want to go ahead with that condition, so you could just read the motion as normal.
Okay, all right, and just disregard that.
Mm-hmm.
So just disregard that. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Anything else you want to add, or no?
No. I believe that sums it up appropriately. Nothing's changed. We'll hopefully see you in five years.
Yeah, thank you. Was this, I always get confused. Is this a public hearing? Do we need to close the public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
So entertain a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Would you want to read the approval, please?
Motion to approve AR 26, Seven Moody Road, applicant for an Aquifer renewal registration over the A-45 and A-50 Aquifer, Seven Moody LLC, applicant owner, MAP 75 lot 37, I-1 zone.
So motion was made by the temporary secretary. Is there a second? By Commissioner Holinsky. Thank you very much. Roll call, vote whenever you're ready.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian Dantonio.
Four.
Nick LaFakas.
Four.
The record show it was unanimous approval. Thank you very much. You're all set for another set, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure I got the correct motion. Commissioner Higley made the motion, right? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Item 7B, which is to adopt the 2024 calendar. I would like to make a suggestion tonight on that, is that we can currently do that, or that this calendar defaults to whatever we accept when we do the planning and zoning one. We have to do the planning and zoning one as part of our...
She gave us one.
Yeah, she gave. But I'm just...
Yeah.
So I'd like to have someone make a motion, please, that the Aquifer Protection Agency calendar be adopted with the planning and zoning calendar that we're going to be doing at the end of the night.
Still moved.
Second.
So a motion made by Commissioner Higley for us to adopt the Aquifer Protection Agency's calendar for 2024 at the same time as we adopt the planning and zoning one. Second made by Vice Chairman DeGray. Any discussion? Yep.
Just to confirm, I believe, I don't have it right in front of me, both of them, but I think in the past, we've just coincided them, so they're the same days.
They're the same day. That's basically what I'm intending to do, yeah.
Right, yeah.
I'm applying, yes. Yep. Seeing none, I'm just going to do a show of hands. All those in favor? So let the record show that's how we're going to handle the 2024 calendar. Seeing that, entertain a motion to adjourn the Aquifer Protection.
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Let the record show that this meeting is adjourned at 6:40. Thank you very much. We'll call this meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission Thursday, November 16th. Order at 7:00 p.m. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fire evacuation. Straight behind everyone, out the double doors, out to the park in the front, or down these set of doors to your right, down the stairs and out in the back, please. There is emergency. Please walk away as far as you can from the building. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Lou Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Lynda DeGray here. John Petronella is absent. Frank Alamo is absent. Joe Mueller is absent. Ken Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo absent. Christian Dantonio.
Here.
And Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Thank you. Seeing that we have some regular members that are absent tonight, we are going to be seating the two alternates as permanent members for tonight to vote on all issues, Commissioner LaFakas and Commissioner Dantonio. Entertain a motion to accept the approval of the minutes of October 25th. approval in the minutes of October 26th.
Still moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. Is there any discussion on the minutes by Vice Chairman DeGray?
Just on page two, under Old Business, it's right after the motion, one, two, three, third sentence down, the preferred access option, and it just has four zeros or O's. I believe it was Option A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that needs to be corrected.
So everyone catch that on the minutes? See where, did everybody catch it?
So what is it supposed to say?
Basically, I'll read it. The Commissioners took a moment to individually review the draft resolution. Instead, he shared a portion of the resolution which points out the preferred access option A that the property owner may choose from. Not double zeros. Have you seen double zeros in your, yeah?
Third one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it was a motion made by Commissioner, Vice Chairman, yeah.
Were there, weren't there two options?
There was. Yeah, there was A and B.
There was A and B.
But the preferred access, but the preferred one that we gave them was A.
Okay, so, okay.
Right.
Understood.
So there's a motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray to accept the minutes as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman Higley. Any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That the record shows unanimous to accept the minutes as amended. No update out of town attorney's report of October 26th, that remains.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do have a quick update.
Yep, yep, please.
So the Michael Parsons et al. versus PCC at 35 Bacon Road will be withdrawn. They've come to a settlement, so that's the Win Stanley application. So that will be withdrawn. And then moving forward with LaCory, we have two new consultant attorneys from Shipman and Goodwin. They've attorney Chelsea McCollum and Matt Ranelli, and they will be handling this case from moving forward, and they had a status meeting on November 7th. So we'll probably have some updates coming up.
Great, thank you. Would you be able to do me a favor and just email me those two attorneys' names, please, when you get a chance?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, everybody all set with that? There's no executive session tonight? Enforcement officers report?
Nope, not this evening.
We actually do have one.
Yes. Any officers report, any enforcement? Yes.
Right. So that was the 329 Hazard Avenue. Sorry, I neglected.
It's okay.
To put that on my agenda to speak on. So basically, we were concerned about the office space in that building. They have been finished. They've put in laminate floorings. They painted the walls and put indoors and utilities such as electric and lights. So we have issued the CO.
Fantastic.
Or at least, we've signed off on it.
Fantastic. So it sounds like they're getting in compliance with the regulation. Thank you so much.
They actually have tenants now.
Great. That's just great to hear. Good news, right, everybody? Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Moving on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of this commission, or a matter where a decision of this commission may still be pending. That includes anything that's in the legal pipelines. Is there anyone like to come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight? For a second time? For a third time? Seeing none, we'll close public participation. Any bond release? Seeing none. We would like, I would like to entertain a motion from someone to please move items from New Business SPR 1923 and SPR 1924 to be done now before new public hearings. Does someone make that motion, please?
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Higley to move SPR 1923 and SPR 1924 prior to new public hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous to move these two items up, so we will proceed now with New Business SPR 1923. Secretary, please read the condition.
SPR, SPR 1923, 157 South Road, application for site plan approval for self-storage juice. Eric Hewitt, application owner, map 55, lot 82, I-1 zone.
Is the applicant representative here? Please come forward. Try again.
Yep. For the record, my name's Russell Heinz, here with Eric Hewitt, the applicant. I prepared the plans, and we have here a.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Right here.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Eric Hewitt.
Dan, where, your address, please?
18 Elizabeth Street, Enfield.
Thank you. So before you start, I just have two questions. One, Matt, did they receive this? Did they receive this that you gave us tonight from John?
I'm sorry, I did email that to.
John Kaboel?
The property owner.
Yes.
I saw it earlier.
And the other question I have before we start is, are these a set of plans that we just received today?
Yeah.
Are these our plans we just received today?
Yes.
If you were aware, our packets go out on Fridays or Thursdays. So we just received these plans today.
I did drop off plans on, what, before I left on vacation, the two revised plans that I had, they asked me to revise, and I did, 14 sets. However, I found out when I came back from vacation that they wanted the complete, you know, so.
Okay, just want to make you aware, we just got those tonight.
Right.
That's okay, I'm not, just want to make that aware for the record. Go ahead.
I did drop off.
Some plans.
Complete sets, I want to say two months ago.
I can clarify.
Yeah.
It, the applicant only revised two sheets, only had to revise two sheets out of the plan set. So when they dropped off the revisions, they only dropped off those two sheets to the office. So those were put into your packet, those two sheets which contained the revisions. The other sheets weren't revised. But we don't, we don't disassemble and collate and stamp plan sets, so we require full.
Right.
Plan sets when revisions are done. So that's what was received, and that's what was handed out today. But the only two sheets that were revised in accordance with town's staff's comments were the two sheets that were in your packet.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to get that for, go ahead. Now you can proceed, please. Feel free.
Very good. So anyway, the parcel is 157 South Road. It's on the south side of South Road. It's 13.2-plus acres. Behind it is Bosco's Towing and Salvage, and the only parcel, or the only, or the only occupancy on the parcel right now is Eric's Auto Repair, which is the darker piece I show up in front or on the map. And our proposal is to build three storage units in the front, which is a grassed area, unwooded. And we had, went to planning and, went to wetlands back in May, got approval, submitted our planning and zoning plans back in probably July or June, and only really, the only question was, was the fire marshal who had concerns about the turning radiuses, and I revised, shortened one building up by 50 feet, and we shortened another building up by 20 feet so we could make his 50-foot radiuses. The health department was concerned about what we were going to do with, if we were going to have any toilet facilities on our site, and we said no. And they agreed that it's okay to be that way. And so we have no, the only utilities for these three units is electricity. So there's going to be no office. It's all done. Eric might have, Eric may help you better on understanding how it's going to be done, but, and Engineering today sent the report about, they want to make sure that we don't cause any drainage flow onto the access drive, which we have no problem with, and obviously, signed and sealed plans. And they want to make sure that we have a proper subbase for when we do the pavement, and we will make sure that we comply with everything he asks for.
Thank you. Are you all set, or?
It's up to you.
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, it's.
We'll answer any questions.
Yeah, any questions?
Thank you. Staff have some comments?
You did get staff's memo. We did hand out the Assistant Town Engineers' comments to you. We think that most of those, if not all of those, can be done by adding a condition into the approval, if you're inclined to do that. We do need to take action this evening. The 65 days, the initial 65 will run out before you get to your next meeting.
Unless, unless they were willing to grant.
The absence of an extension, if they're willing to grant an extension.
Yeah.
Beyond that, there was, a lot of the time was spent trying to resolve, A, kind of competing codes, if you will, between the health code and the building code as far as the bathroom issue. So it was determined based on the health code that they didn't need to have a bathroom for the storage units, but the building code requires that they do provide some type of facility. So those facilities will be provided in the auto body or the auto repair facility, and we've included conditions in, in our draft motion that would, would address that. Beyond that, the fire marshals' issues, the design issues, the turning radii have all been addressed. The concern about the fire hydrants, that's been addressed. The Health District, because of the situation with the bathroom, they will use the existing septic system that is there, and if there is a need for repairs in the future, then they'll have to obviously take care of that. But the Health District staff advised us that they were, they were approved to use that system that they're using now for that purpose. I don't think there's anything else that, that I need to add.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Any questions from the applicant? Commissioner DeGray?
I just have a question, because I see you're going to have auctions, and I've watched television, I saw that Storage War thing, and there's like lots of people that come to these auctions. You're saying it's going to be only online?
Only online.
All right.
I won't have any live auctions here.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Holinski?
Yeah, I had a question about the access road. Are you going, any improvements made to that road?
Excuse me?
The access road.
Yep.
Going in.
Yep.
Okay. From what I, and I have to apologize, I didn't have a chance to go over there before this meeting, but, but it's, it's kind of undeveloped, an undeveloped road. Is that, is that true?
It's compacted milling, it's been like that three years.
But it's not an asphalt type of road or anything like that. So I was just concerned about traffic in and out.
I'm going to pay that.
Erosion, oh, okay. I guess that solves my problem.
Might as well, right?
Yeah, because I was just, you know, because, I mean, how many units do you have? How many storage units are there?
Well, depending on how we mark them out, but it's.
Just ballpark. I mean, I don't need to, I mean, are there.
Was it 140?
I don't think there's going to be 140, but you got, oh, I mean, if they're all, normally they're 10-foot wide.
Sure.
And that's two, the ones 200-foot, or 220 and 240, so I guess that would be plus or minus 50, and the other one, I think there's only going to be probably 35.
Okay. And it's going to be all unattended, right?
Correct.
I mean, there's not going to be somebody on site.
No.
Kind of keeping an eye on it. Okay. So you have a code, you go in, do your thing. Okay, all right.
You all set, Ken?
Yep.
I guess my only concern is, I got to be quite frank with you, I'm, I'm kind of unprepared to vote for this night, because I just got the plans tonight when I got here at quarter after 6:00. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I just would like to go home and look at the plans. I don't want to vote on anything without looking at the plans, and I just got the complete set of plans tonight. I would be much more comfortable if you would grant us an extension to the next meeting, so I can go home, look at the plans, and enact on this right after Thanksgiving, because we're meeting December 5th, Lori, if I'm not mistaken, which is, you know, not.
Seventh, I think.
Yep.
I guess the only thing is that.
Strictly up to you, because, you know, you have to grant us the extension, because that does run out tonight, which is kind of unusual, too, that we have one hearing, and then the application runs out at this hearing. So it's almost like we're under the shotgun here, and I don't like to, I don't, I don't, I'm not happy operating that way.
The other thing was that one of the concerns, or not the concerns, but when I initially put the application in, one of the things that was a bone of, I don't know, I didn't understand it at first, but they required that I send a PDF file.
Yeah.
Of a complete set of plans, the way it was. So I assumed that every member in this commission would have seen those, because I don't know why I had to do a PDF and then 14 sets of plans.
That's just our, that's just the way we do it, so.
Okay, so I assumed everybody at least saw the.
No.
The plans, and you just wanted something bigger to look at if you had.
So that's why I'm asking you tonight, for you to give us the approval to extend it for one more meeting, because, again, we've only had one meeting on this. We haven't seen the full set of plans till tonight. Frankly, I'm uncomfortable with voting on this tonight. So I'm, I'm looking at you as the chairman and asking for you to grant us this extension.
I can't, so I have to.
Yeah, I'm looking at the owner.
It's hard for me, I'm anxious.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Me, because I've seen the plans for so long, I'm looking at like, it was two revised pages for the radius and everything.
Again, we did not receive those until tonight. None of us have. So none of us have seen these till tonight. That's, that's our problem. So I'm, I'm looking at you to give us, was it two and a half weeks?
Not even.
To the next meeting, three weeks, two weeks?
December 7, whatever that's.
That's all.
The.
Or you want us to vote on it tonight? You're going to, it's your call, my friend.
Do you have any other questions about?
My other thing I have is, this is basically, unlike some of the other storage unit facilities we have, this is really going to be unattended in a way that basically, unless there's an issue, there's no one near full time. That's why you're able to not have some of the facilities that a normal building has, correct?
And nowadays, like, ever since COVID, everything's pretty much done online. The contracts are going to be done online.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll get the key cards the same way.
Yeah.
You know, we're right there at the body shop, so if somebody needed, had an issue or something during those operating hours, we, I would be there. I need to be an owner-operator, not like these other ones where they have a management company, they have somebody.
You're speaking to the mic.
Sorry. That's okay. Some of the other storage units have people that live there, and that's their management company. There's, there's nothing there but electricity. The pavement, we are going to pave that road if we're approved with everything. It needs it. It's, we fill it in all the time, the potholes and stuff, and they come back. But I'll grant it to you.
Thank you.
You know. And if you do have any questions, I just, I'd like a heads up, so if we have to change something.
Yeah. We will go through, if we have any questions, we will go through staff, and they will contact you immediately.
Okay.
So, if I may, unless you had a question.
I just have a question.
Yep.
You don't own that access road, am I correct?
Yes, I do.
You do own the access road?
Yes.
And then you have an easement for the Boscos?
The Boscos have a right of way to use it to get to their business.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So the applicant has been gracious enough to ask for an extension for the next meeting? Is there any discussion on that? Is there anything we legally have to do to accept that extension, because he has stated in the record that we just need to table this, because he's granting an extension?
I don't think you need to vote. I think you just acknowledge that he's granted the extension, and you can table it, vote to table it for the December. So we should want to go through like a test vote?
No, no, we can't do that. We can't do test votes. But thank you for doing, I think it's the best for all of us. If you do this, we'll see you next meeting. The applicant has asked for an extension.
Yep.
So I'll entertain a motion to table this item. Motion made by Commissioner D'Antonio.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman Higley to table this, and we'll see you in the next meeting.
Thank you.
All those in favor, table.
All right.
Unanimous to table.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Now we're moving on to 1924.
SPR 1924, 3 Palomba Drive, applicant for site plan modification, addition for storage and auto detailing for repaired cars. Applicant Thomas, I, I'm going to kill this, help me out.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Owner, Belize Automotive Realty, map 57, lot 320, BR zone.
Thank you. The applicant, sort of representative, please come forward, identify for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Brian Deno.
Into the mic, please.
Brian Deno from Deno Land Survey, here to represent the applicant.
Hi, I'm Tom Adamsick, 151 Hanus Drive, West Springfield, Mass.
Thank you. I don't think that mic is working as well, so go ahead, you guys continue, starting anytime you're ready.
How about that?
No, it's not working at all.
Okay. What we have here is an existing car repair shop, Enfield Collision, they've been here since 1991. It's on the corner of Palomba Drive and Elm Street. Behind it is Asnan Town Community College, in front of it is Meinike, and to the north is Town Fair Tire. What they need to do, or what they're asking for, is an addition 50 by 23 to store car parts in, and also have a single garage bay to detail the cars that they repair, before they deliver them back to the customer. Right now, they have two storage trailers behind the building where they're putting car parts, and they like to get it inside the building and get rid of the storage trailers. And also, they wash the cars out front where they're doing all the work on the cars, and instead, they'd like to detail them out back, put in an oil-water separator, which they should have. And then, per the regulations, we have to add some green space around the addition and some landscaping, and we show that on our plan. And in the end, we have a net zero increase in hard surface because of the required landscaping around the building and removing the storage trailers. The storage trailers, in the beginning, will be moved out back, because they still have to have somewhere to put the parts while they're doing the addition, and once the addition is done and they get their C.O., the storage trails will leave. The town did ask us for some erosion controls, and we show silt sacks on the catch basins, and any material that comes out of the ground will either go in containers to be used later to put the grass back, or that will be hauled off-site at that time. None will be just piled in the parking lot.
Thank you. Are you all set?
Yeah.
Anything you'd like to add, sir?
Good job.
Okay, all right. Staff, any comments?
No, I think maybe just cleaning up a couple of the agency comments here. The Health Department really has no jurisdiction, it's on public water, public sewer, this use really has no bearing on them at all. And the Engineering Department, John, just wanted to make sure that there was a PE stamp on the final plans.
Yeah.
And so we'll have that, they do have a PE on board, I understand. So fairly simple application, really small addition. Apologies to the applicants and the owners, sometimes the smallest applications are the most complicated, and trying to retrofit an existing developed site to meet current standards, you know, there's a lot of dimensional aspects to it. So this took probably a little bit longer than we would have hoped, but we were ready to recommend approval, we drafted up a motion for you.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner, questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Just curious, you realize that one of the site specifics is that no outdoor storage will be prohibited, you did see that as a site condition? Okay. Just wanted to make sure you saw that. All set? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve SPR 1924 with conditions and modifications, application for site plan approval to allow a 23 by 50 addition to an existing auto body shop for accessory storage and detailing and improving, I'm sorry, including parking, driveway, ancillary improvements at 3 Palomba Drive, Belize Automotive Realty, LP owner, Tom Adam.
Adamsick.
Adamsick, I'm sorry, told you I was going to kill it. Robert Thomas Realty LLC, applicant Bryant Deno, LS agent, map 57, lot 320, BR zone. Further reference plans, reports, and application materials listed herein with.
26.
26 conditions.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner D'Antonio. Any discussion? Seeing none, whenever the secretary's ready to call a roll. Oh, my God.
Lou Fury.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Linda DeGray, four. Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Thank you so much.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Nick Lefakis.
Four.
If the record shows unanimous approval, you're all set, and good luck with your project.
Thank you for your time.
Now we're moving on to new public hearings. PH 3077, 38 Post Road, Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, wherever you're ready, sorry.
This is.
It's okay, you're doing fine.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, November 16, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street concerning PH 3077, 38 Post Office Road, and rear parcel application for special use permit for the expansion for a construction facility, including outdoor storage. Spazarini Construction LLC applicant and owner, St. Thomas Realty Associates LLC owner, map 47, lot 12 and 51, I-1 and I-2 zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant representative's here? I see you're already seated, please, three of you identify yourselves for the record, and I'm not sure if the pickup mics are working, so.
Thank you, I'm Dori F. Amagledi, I'm an attorney at Kahane-Karenzki &amp; Capicella, representing the applicant. I can just do the introduction, we have Tim Kuhn also, who is with J.R. Russo, he's our engineer, and we have Mark Spazarini, who's representative of the applicant's Spazarini Construction Company.
Thank you.
Just briefly, what we're doing here is Spazarini Construction Company presently operates out of the front parcel, which is at 38 Post Office Road. They have a construction facility there, it's already been previously approved for many years. They're looking to expand their operations to have some additional storage to a vacant parcel that's just over 14 and a half acres to the rear of their existing site. They own and control it in a different entity, and they lease the front parcel, and then they'll be leasing the back parcel. And it will just be used on the back parcel, again, for an additional outdoor storage area. With that, I'm going to ask Tim Kuhn to take you through the details of it. Before, I'm sorry. The reason we're here is because the use, a construction facility in the I-1 zone requires a special permit, as does the limited outdoor storage. So there's two special permits before you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Is it working?
Yes, it sounds like it is.
Okay, it's working. So I just wanted to point out on this plan, this is the Spazarini's current office building in operation, located up in the front off of Post Office Road, and this is the subject property that we're discussing now, to the rear of that parcel, where they're looking to expand their storage yard. This is a blow-up of that area. They're looking to put down approximately 1.4 acres of additional gravel for outdoor storage, to store materials for their construction operation, such as earth materials and pipe, no-waste materials, all inert materials. We will be installing three new 24-inch culverts, which you can see kind of up at the top of this area, at the northern end, across an existing, actually to replace an existing undersized culvert that receives runoff from along I-91. So we're upgrading that area and upgrading the conveyance of the water across there. The water that actually, the runoff from our site will slope down to the east to a swale, which will convey it all to a new stormwater management basin that'll be located on the eastern side of the yard. This has been designed in accordance with the DEEP Stormwater Manual to provide treatment and detention, and ensure that there are no impacts to the surrounding wetlands or down gradient of butters. There are some areas of wetland fill, which are shown hatch there. We are providing mitigation in different areas to offset the impacts of that fill, and we did receive a wetland permit or approval in September. All the disturbed areas outside of the gravel are planned to be loamed and seeded and restored as vegetation, and that's pretty straightforward, that's essentially all we're doing out there. Be happy to answer any questions, I'll get back to Dori.
There is existing tree and wooded buffer around at least two sides of the property, and then we have 91 to the, is at the west. And then the storage yard will be a significant way back from the street, so it'll be kind of shielded by the building in the front as well. The actual outdoor storage area is limited to not more than 20% of the overall parcel area, which is a criteria under your limited outdoor storage regulation. I think that we've addressed all of staff's concerns, we did have an ART, there were a couple of minor engineering comments to provide additional details, but I think everything else has been resolved. If we have questions, we can answer them now.
And I do know you had extensive inland wetland hearings and things that had to be done, yeah, we did catch all that, so we knew, that was the first step for you, before you came before us. Any questions from staff, have any comments they would like to add to this, Matt?
Just to update the, excuse me, the fire marshal had no comment, I think that was kind of a blank at the point that we did the memo, so just to note that. Again, another straightforward application, obviously ancillary and, you know, kind of conventional use associated with a construction operation, so we think it's inappropriate use for the location. I did not include a reference to the limited outdoor storage in the draft motion.
Yeah.
I'll leave it up to you, whether or not you want to, you know, modify that motion to include that. I think we understand what the scope is.
Yeah.
We understand it's a construction yard, so it's obviously for that purpose, but just if you wanted to add that, you could kind of add that in there, but no other comments.
The only thing I'll add is, you are, you know, I'm sure you are, the site specific conditions, number nine, number 11, you are aware of those, and you understand what those mean. Materials stored will not be sold for re-retail use, but will be used as part of the construction operation. I figured you would.
We did have a copy of this entire approval motion prior to, and we've had a chance to review.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make attention, bring attention, number 11 also, to store will be inert, and no waste fluid, junks, or debris, right. I figured you would, but I just wanted to make it for the record that you guys saw that, I want to bring it to the point. Is there any other, some questions for the applicant? Everyone feel pretty comfortable? Yep? Commissioner D'Antonio?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the current condition. So the land's already been cleared, it seems like, from the current condition, based on the bulge piles, I think it is referenced in the plans.
Has been cleared.
So you'd be grading and.
Be grading.
It's gravel, is it gravel, or?
It will be gravel.
It is gravel.
It will be gravel. A lot of it is graveled down.
Right now, it's basically just topsoil.
Right, yeah, they'll be stripping the topsoil and putting in the gravel.
It's going to be somewhat of an ongoing project, because I elevated the site grades. As you know, we do a lot of roadwork, and, you know, we're site contractors in Enfield. So I'm looking at this thing, too, is, I can take surplus material and bring it, because in this town, there's, it's getting less and less areas where we can dispose of this material. And eventually, it would make a nice pad for a building site. But, you know, so right now, you know, I'm planning, and it's just going to be like surplus pipe or surplus gravel that comes off a job in there. And, you know, we keep a neat operation and go in my yard any time, and it's, it's not a mess, that's for sure.
No. All set, Chris? Seeing none? Is there anyone in the, I see, any in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this application for a third time? Seeing none? Is there any other comments for the applicant, or any other? Any other questions? No? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner, DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Higley to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve public hearing 3077 with conditions and modifications, application for a special permit to allow an accessory and subordinate construction yard on map 47, lot 12, as part of the permitted construction office located at 38 Post Office Road, map 47, lot 51, Post Office Road, LLC, and St. Thomas Realty Associates LLC owners, Spazarini Construction Company LLC applicant, agent, map 47, lots 51 and 12, I-1 and I-2 zones, per the referred plans, reports, and application materials listed with the 27 conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion under the motion to approve? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Lou Fury.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Linda DeGray, four. Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Nick Lefakis.
Four.
Thank you. If the record shows unanimous approval, good luck with the project.
Thank you. Good night.
Moving now to PH 3078. Whenever you're ready to read that one, take your time.
Got it.
I'm going to stand up. I'm just going to stand up.
PH, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of, on Thursday, November 16, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street concerning PH 3078, applicant for the Impact Residential Development for mixed-use development at 20 and 1/2 Pleasant Street, 16 Pleasant Street, 2 Chapel Street, 1 and 5 and 19 and 21 Church Street, 17 North Main Street, inclusive of the front parcel with 8.1 acres. Impact Residential Development, application, applicant, town of Enfield owner, owner TD5.
Thank you. I'll give you a couple of seconds, I guess, squared away. So the applicant representatives are here, there's a mic in front of you that you, not all are going to be able to share. Some of the portable mics might work, let's try to make sure that they do before you start speaking, so people in the audience, and of course, for YouTube can hear. So when you guys are ready, please identify yourselves for the record, be much appreciated.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Chris Smith, I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Alter &amp; Pearson, and I appear before you this evening representing the Developer Applicant Impact Residential Development LLC. As a housekeeping matter, I just wanted to, just hoping to just confirm that the signage was posted, and I, we did submit an affidavit with the photos, from what I understand, and I think when I was speaking with Assistant Town Attorney Driver, that that is part of the record, but I just wanted to confirm that.
All their public hearing requirements have been satisfied.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In addition to saying good evening to Mr. Chairman and the commission, also to your professional staff, Town Planner Witten, and Assistant Town Planners Driver and Davis. I think with the, so with the PowerPoint.
Whenever you're all set, clear to identify for the record?
Oh, I was going to introduce everybody next, but that's fine.
That'll be fine, that'll be fine, yeah, however you want to do it, that's fine.
Do we do it with the mouse? Ah, bingo, there we go. And what I'd like to do at the outset, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, is introduce the members of the team. The, again, the Developer Applicant is Impact Residential Development LLC. Unfortunately, Logan Kiwig, who's been involved with this entire process up to this point, dealing with the commission and the town council, is not able to be with us this evening, and he sends his apologies. But typically, it would be Mr. Kiwig that would have been here if he didn't have this prior commitment. The Developer Consultant Collaborative Development LLC is represented by Mr. Peter Wood on my right, and we'll be hearing from Peter after I provide a little summary of the proposal. Frank Vaca on my left is our professional licensed civil engineer with the BSC Group. And then finally, on my far right, we have Susan Odell, who is our architect with Paul B. Bailey Architects LLC out of New Haven. And again, Chris Smith for the record of Alter &amp; Pearson. Our presentation agenda for this evening is, first, I was going to provide an overview to the commission, it'll be, and it will be a summary of some of the components of the proposal. It'll be, and it will be a summary of some of the components of the proposal. Then we'll hear from Mr. Wood on the affordable housing opportunities that are being promoted in housing diversity with this proposal. We'll also then address the evolution of the Union Square development, provide a summary. This is the public record for this application. It might be a little redundant because you're familiar with it and have gone through some of the processes, but for the public and for the commission, again, we'll come back and address those issues. After they've been addressed by Mr. Wood and Ms. Odell, we, Mr. Vaca will then provide an overview of the site plan itself, the site-specific proposal. Ms. Odell will provide you with a summary of the architectural components of the proposal. And then we'll circle back to Mr. Wood with a review of the benefits of the development associated with the development proposal for the town, and then I'll provide a brief summary. So what I'd like to do at this point is just provide a, again, brief summary or overview of the proposal. And as you're aware, the application involves a special permit application for a 70-unit residential community that includes 10 lots or parcels located along Pleasant Street, Chapel Street, Church, and North Main Street. And we've provided you with this aerial, Mr. Vaca produced this, designated, designating the 10 lots. The proposal would involve merging those 10 lots into a single lot, which would be, would comprise approximately 1.78 acres that would accommodate the development. And specifically, the development proposal, the residential component, there is an office space that is being provided, but the residential component does involve, again, 70 units. There will be two units that will be studios or efficiencies. 27 units will be one bedrooms and 41 units will be two bedrooms. And as you'll hear shortly from Mr. Wood of Collaborative Development LLC, there will be 56 income-restricted units that will provide both housing density and housing opportunities for the citizens of Enfield and for those who work in the town, including employees of the town and your Board of Education. Now, again, it's, the proposal is a special permit and we respectfully submit that the, it has been submitted pursuant to and respectfully submitting compliance with your zoning regulations and in particular sections 8.120 and 8.123 and 8.125, again, of your regulations. And specifically respectfully represent that the proposal, proposal provides for a development in close proximity to a planned commuter rail, and I'm taking this out of, out of your, those regulations, those particular provisions in your TD5 zone district. Provides for development in close proximity to a planned commuter rail station. The proposal will leverage and protect historic and natural features in the neighborhood. It enhances and preserves the conditional, I'm sorry, excuse me, the existing commercial businesses and properties in the neighborhood, and this is important. And specifically, this will be done by providing, with the residents, we'll be providing patrons for the neighborhoods, neighborhood businesses, and the proposal will not be competing with any of your existing businesses in the neighborhood, but will be complementing them, effectively having boots on the ground that would support the businesses in that area and the commercial properties, many of which are, have a number of vacancies at this point. And again, Mr. Wood will and Ms. Odell will be walking you through some of those specifics in a moment. The proposal also provides office space on-site and, most importantly, it provides an active pedestrian environment with access to existing goods and services in the neighborhood that will comprise a transit-oriented area in the Town of Enfield. In addition, we respectfully submit that, and this will be addressed shortly, hearing from our experts and consulting team, that the proposal does comply with both your site plan criteria provided in section 9.104 and your special permit criteria provided in section 9.2, 9.20.2 of your zoning regulations. In addition to this, as indicated, an assistant town planner, Drivers Report, the proposal, we respectfully submit does comply with your plan, recently adopted Plan of Conservation and Development, 2023 to 2033, with an effective date of May 31, 2023, is, and specifically, number one, the proposal will encourage and provide for density of housing types and affordability at all income levels, which is a stated goal of your POCD at page 50. It's also consistent with the plan's goal to work with developers to promote affordable housing opportunities. This is clearly a unique public-private partnership with my client and the Town of Enfield with this proposal, and that, that goal and objective is stated at page 51 of your POCD. And it also promotes transit-oriented development in Thompsonville, another goal in your POCD at page 51. As to economic development, which I think is chapter six in the POCD, the proposal, again, it's important, will be protecting existing businesses and properties in the neighborhood. It's not going to be competing with those existing businesses, and it will be promoting the, thereby promoting the retention of businesses in the neighborhood, which, again, is a stated purpose for promoting economic development in your POCD at page 54. I respectfully suggest, as indicated in the last bullet on this slide, that the housing diversity and opportunity goals that are referenced in your POCD that we just walked through are carried over into your recently, also recently adopted affordability, excuse me, Affordable and Fair Housing Plan effective the day before on May 30, 2023. And I, and I noticed that Mr. Dr. Pollan had, had kind of incorporated much of what was in the POCD into the Affordable and Fair Housing Plan. And by the way, both of those plans, I know you spent a lot of time on them, are very well done, so just wanted to commend you on that. And with the permission of the chair at this point, what I'd like to do is turn the presentation over to Peter Wood, again, of Collaborative Development LLC, and Susan Odell, our architect of Paul B. Bailey Architect LLC.
Please let's bookmark that slide. We might need to come back to this one.
Well, we'll have to come back to it since my IT skills, I think I know what bookmark means. I've inferred from it, but other than that, I'm at a total loss.
As long as you know where it is so we can get back to it.
We'll come back to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Peter Wood. I am with Collaborative Development LLC. I also am the representative for Impact Residential Development, which is a, an affiliate of Starwood Capital, which is a very large international developer, which has focused on affordable housing, along with its international portfolio of resort properties and the like. In fact, Starwood has the largest inventory of mixed income and affordable developments in the country, so it has tremendous experience in this area. Impact Residential was created just a few years ago to focus on extending that, that footprint and is working in a variety of states to do so. Impact responded to the town's RFP and pulled together this team that you see before you. After having gone through a year and a half of pre-development work and planning, we have arrived at the development that you see before you, which is comprised, as, as Chris said, of two studio units, 27 one-bedrooms, 41 two-bedroom units for a total of 70 units. This will be a mixed-income development. It is affordable housing as well as market-rate housing, so it is aptly described as mixed income. The financing for developments such as this are driven primarily by federal tax credits, which are allocated by Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. It is the sole state allocating agency, and it is responsible for the vast majority of affordable housing that's been developed in the state of Connecticut over the last many decades. The development here proposes 18 units serving households up to 30% of area median income, 28 units for households between 30 and 50% of median income, 10 households for, 10 units for households between 50 and 60% of AMI, and 14 unrestricted market-rate units. For those who aren't familiar with median incomes, Enfield has a median income of $118,100. That's the 2023 figure. So when you look at who is served by this development, obviously, market-rate households is, any household is eligible for those, particularly those who are not eligible for the affordable income mix. So that's any households above $70,450. 60% of AMI, which, again, is approximately $70,500, serves, and these figures are from the Town of Enfield's public release of salary information for Town and Board of Education employees, includes police officers, civil dispatchers, most Town and Board of Education employees, firemen, equipment operators. The 50% of AMI, which is approximately $59,000, serves people such as EMTs, daycare teachers, paramedics, administrative professionals and secretaries, librarians, teachers aides, and social workers. And the 30% of AMI serves households up to $34,500 as of the 2023 figures, which includes service workers, custodians, retail and restaurant employees, and homeless and formerly homeless individuals and families. As you can see, all of these, these careers and individuals captured by these income groups are very typical of, of people who already live and work in Enfield and Thompsonville. I wanted to sort of walk through the evolution of the development plan, since this is our first time before this commission. We first responded to the town's RFP for a mixed-income and residential housing development in June. Actually, the RFP was in March of 2022. Our response and presentation to the town was in June of 2022, and it proposed two buildings on the site with a total of 58 units and some ground floor, conceptual ground floor retail space facing North Main Street, as is required by the town regulations. The densities and parking that were included in that site plan were, were limited by the parcel size. The town properties totaled approximately 1 and 1/2 acres and the ability to provide parking for the existing, the proposed uses. Over subsequent months, IRD Impact Residential wanted to see what the development was capable of in terms of overall capacity and explored the potential of acquiring adjacent parcels to be able to create a larger footprint with access to the proposed high-speed rail station. One of the values of transit-oriented districts, as you're well aware, having created the regulation, is the opportunity to create additional density near large transportation modes. In this case, it's the new rail station. So we looked at acquiring adjacent parcels and put together a plan, as you can see the last bullet here, in the fall and winter of 2022, purchase and sale agreements were negotiated with adjacent neighbors, which would have allowed for three buildings to be put on this parcel or the total properties with onsite parking and increasing the density to 123 units of, again, studios, ones and two-bedroom units. We subsequently met with the town requesting support for financing applications to DECD and eventually for the town's approval of the purchase and sale agreement for the town-owned properties. And the feedback that we got in those hearings was a mixture. There was a lot of support for the, for the proposal and the plan, and there was also concerns raised about the amount of parking that would be generated by the larger site and density. So we responded by scaling things back so that, in fact, we would not have that much of a footprint in parking in the neighborhood. So we, in fact, scaled it back to the point where we are now envisioning only one private property being purchased. There is a PSA in place for that. It's part of the record so that that would provide us the additional parking that was necessary to come to the plan that's before you, which is 70 units, a 43% reduction of what we had envisioned prior to that point. Onsite commercial or office activity has been limited to services that the developer themselves can provide. This includes onsite management, maintenance, leasing services, and resident service offices, all of which will be in what we describe as building A. It's the building on your left as you look at the plan, which faces North Main Street as required by the regulations. We are also providing fitness and community rooms in the second building on the lower right-hand side of the site plan on either end of the building so that, in fact, the ground floor of each of these spaces facing the streets on either end of building B and the end facing North Main of building A will have plate glass windows and be consistent with commercial space appearances in town. Let me have Susan Odell take over here. Can you hear that?
Yeah, maybe I can use this.
We'll see if it works this time.
Here we go.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to give a little background on how we arrived at the retail-commercial conundrum that we were facing and how we resolved it. So after, early on in the process, after studying the neighborhood in some detail, we did find ourselves facing the issue of retail or commercial viability. So we did some research and we found that this situation is not unique, and in fact, it exists throughout the country. So this image here is just an overview of our site. Let's see here.
Just click if you want to move forward.
Click, okay, there we go. So on the left, you see the development in the upper portion, and then we went down Pearl Street, took some photos. This is, these are recent photos of existing retail spaces and civic spaces to just identify the conditions of the neighborhood. You can see several vacancies, but also you can see several stores that are thriving, but some concerns here. So the report you see on the right, 10 Principles for Rebuilding Neighborhood Retail, it's from the Urban Land Institute, and it provides a blueprint for neighborhoods like Thompsonville that are seeking revitalization in order to provide more local retail opportunities. So if you will permit me, I'll read a few sentences from the report. "Over the past five decades, local neighborhood retail has been hollowed out by changing trends to big-box suburban centers. The results are apparent: commercial streets with deteriorating buildings, empty storefronts or marginal month-to-month tenants, poor pedestrian environments and amenities, and untended streets and sidewalks," all of which is evident in the photos you see there. "Recent trends towards walkable mixed-use neighborhoods are encouraging, but however, to achieve long-term sustainability, plans for rebuilding neighborhood retail must recognize previous decades of change and embrace solutions that are realistically market-based. It is not enough to base them solely on enlightened public policy goals or the community's wish list, no matter how well-intentioned." The principles that the report gives are sequential. You see them there listed in the lower right. The first two you have provided already. The town is the strong champion for Thompsonville and its revitalization, and it has provided the vision as documented in the TOD regulations and the Plan of Conservation and Development." So that puts us at principle three, which is what we're proposing here tonight. Principle three states that successful retail depends on successful Principle three states that successful retail depends on successful residential neighborhoods. Where residential growth and revitalization is occurring, retail is primed to follow. It simply will not occur the other way around. It states that mixed-income housing must be encouraged. It states that mixed-use developments must be encouraged, and specifically, a mix of housing and offices, because that supports retail by bringing in more customers, supporting longer business hours, and bringing in rents up to 20% higher than would likely be in the same place without the mix of housing and office space. Office components provide daytime retail and restaurant demand while residents add customers in the evening. Principle four, making pedestrians feel safe. So good design must be encouraged to enable pedestrians to feel safe and to maintain their visual interest. Buildings must look as though they belong in the neighborhood, especially in terms of scale, height, and character. Principle number five, adequate, convenient parking is the most important precondition for successful retail. The remaining principles focus more on when the neighborhood is ready to start bringing in retail and how to make that happen. So I stop at principle five.
Yes, we, again, the RFP from the town was directed towards a mixed-income ad-residential development, and in good faith, IRD proposed initially some ground floor retail as part of the original site plan that was proposed. After doing research and looking much more carefully at the site and its location, as you can see, we discovered there's an abundance of vacancies in this neighborhood now, and it would not be possible in the view of the developer to bring in new retail to basically undermine which, an already struggling commercial environment in the community. It's complicated further by the financing for a development like this wherein you're looking at a predominant mix of public as well as private resources. The tax credits that are allocated are not really, it's not federal tax dollars being directed, they're tax credits which are assigned to a developer who, if you meet then the, the requirements to be awarded tax credits, they are sold to an equity company, an investor, and that is part of the private equity that comes into the project. It makes up over half of the total development sources, as well as a private permanent mortgage. But to be able to, to meet the array of income served, as you saw presented earlier, you, you require a lot of additional soft public subsidy. None of those funds, including the tax credit equity, can be directed towards retail and commercial uses. They are restricted to residential activities. So to be able to truly, truly create a mixed-income development, you have to have a very strong retail component, which is basically the financing is committed upfront, basically separated out legally from the rest of the development through its own condominium parcel, and it is its own capital stack of financing directed solely towards that, that commercial use. What the developer has done in lieu of having that environment at this point in time in Thompsonville, and we believe that is coming, but at this point, it would be premature to be able to commit to that and still meet the financing requirements for the development. I think with the addition of more development in the Thompsonville area, particularly in this transit-oriented district, as you see more new development coming in and building up the foot traffic and the incomes in the neighborhood, retail will follow. I've seen that happen. I've been doing this kind of development in the state of Connecticut and across the country for over 35 years, and every time we go into a struggling community economically and create new housing, the retail in the area naturally blossoms, no matter how difficult the neighborhood is, because you have people demanding those services. And that's what we bring to this site. So just moving on, I want to pass this off to our civil engineer.
Want to switch Frank?
Frank Vaca.
Can you, can you all hear me? Excellent. For the record, my name is Francis Vaca. I'm a professional engineer at the BAC Group in Gloucester Park, Connecticut, and this evening I like to go a little bit more in-depth with the design of the site plan itself. In particular, I'm going to speak a little bit closely on the site program, the circulation, access to the site, stormwater, some of the site amenities throughout the, the site plan, and then I'm going to focus in particular on the parking. I know that's, that's been something that has been critical to the commission and to residents in the area. Again, I know that this has been shown once already, but the yellow area is going to be the new development property boundary. I'd like to bring this up again just to show its proximity to adjacent businesses and so on, and then when I switch the site plan, just be aware that the screen is going to rotate 90 degrees clockwise so that north will be facing to the right. All right, here is the proposed development as Peter had presented a bit earlier in the presentation. As far as the size of the development, if you can see my cursor here, the boundary line is represented by this dark phantom line as identified here. It is 1.78 acres in total, and it will comprise the site and two four-story buildings. So building A is the smaller of the two buildings, building B is the larger. Building A will house 25 residential units as well as the office space, which is located in the, directly adjacent to North Main Street in accordance with the zoning regulations that Chris mentioned earlier. The exit, entrance, exit out of the building will be as identified here out into the parking area. Building B's main entrance will be facing west in the direction of the Bigelow Commons and Pleasant Street. There will be 45 residential units located in this building, as well as a fitness, a fitness room that will be located on the north side and a larger community use room. The community space will actually have doors that open out onto the patio, which I will speak about in a few moments. The gray that you see identified here is the current parking area based on the size of the site, and we were able to fit 76 parking spaces in the orientation shown here. Six of these parking spaces, the six that are identified right in this location, right here, will be specifically reserved for use by the office space in accordance with the zoning regulations here. I'd like to speak briefly about the circulation around the site. I have coordinated with the North Thompsonville Fire District. They have the largest fire apparatus in town, the largest fire truck. I got the, the specifications for the truck, and I've ran that through my modeling software to assure that there is access in all directions from North Main Street, from Church Street, from Chapel Street, down along Pleasant Street in order to access the site in the case of an emergency. Fire department, fire department connections to the building will be located directly adjacent to the street in both buildings, again, in the case of an emergency. As far as trash removal, the beige rectangle you see right in the center of the site equal distant between building B and building A will be a dumpster pad that will house two eight-yard dumpsters, one for recycling, one for trash, and the design of the dumpster pad will be such that it will provide screening at all times. There will be a pedestrian access gate, and it will be handicap accessible to both of the trash receptacles. There will be double-swing access gates so that a front-load garbage truck can enter the site, access the trash receptacles, and then exit via Chapel Street. With regard to pedestrian access, you can see that I've, we have identified two separate crosswalks here. So residents from building A will be able to cross through the parking area to utilize the patio, or they can turn west, cross again, and then walk along a sidewalk that will ultimately utilize two handicap ramps down to Pleasant Street. And the focus beside, the focus with regard to this is to ensure that pedestrians have as, as direct an access in the direction of the proposed train station as much as possible. Again, this is a transit-oriented development. We wanted to ensure that there was as a direct pathway to the train station for the intermodal transit option associated with the, with the train station. We've also added some additional sidewalk areas throughout the site to encourage pedestrian use and resident use up to, to the north, to some of the sandwich shop that's our, and other, other businesses to the north of this area, as well as to the south, to some of the businesses, the new Firehouse Pizza Restaurant that I've heard potentially is going in to the south of this area. As far as access, we also performed a, a traffic impact study of the entire development to determine what the level of service, if there would be any level of service to any of the associated intersections in the vicinity of the, of the parcel. There were five intersections that were analyzed. After the analysis associated with this development and with the 70 units that are provided, there, there was no negative impact to any of the levels of service for those As far as access to the site, there will be a, you can access in from the south or from the north, you can exit to the south or to the north along North Main Street. However, Chapel will remain a one-way access, so there will be a right turn into the site and right turn out of the site only. As far as stormwater, we are doing something a little bit different than standard. We are not utilizing catch basins or pipes as typically designed. There is not going to be a giant detention basin underneath the sidewalk, which is usually proposed nowadays. We are following a low-impact development design where we are splitting the site into three specific areas. Interestingly enough, the site high point is actually located right at the star, which led for an ideal design that essentially sheds water in the direction of Chapel Street. It also sheds water in the direction of Pleasant and in the direction of North Main. And these three blue areas that I've identified here are essentially going to be, they're called focal point biofiltration rain gardens. These focal points essentially look just like a depressed garden. Beneath the garden area, there is a planted, a very specifically engineered design media that will allow runoff from the parking areas to basically infiltrate down into a small storage system before discharging directly into the town drainage system. These plants that are planted are specifically engineered, the plants are not engineered, but the plants are designed to absorb all of the pollutants and so on that would essentially run off all the vehicles. So rather than use the traditional drainage system with detention and, and typical design, we're using a more low-impact development approach. This has all been reviewed by the assistant town engineer. It does satisfy all the requirements. We can pass the 50-year storm. That was a concern of his. Essentially, the flow runs through the sidewalk through a very, through a specifically engineered treatment unit into the garden. If it does over, if it does fill up this area, the grate that you see identified here is basically the high-flow grate to ensure that this doesn't flood out any adjacent properties.
Mr. Chairman, would you like Mr. Vaca just to give a little?
No, sir.
Okay, you'll catch up. Okay.
Thank you.
As far as site amenities for the development, these arrows here highlight two twin eight-stall bicycle racks. So that's total of 18, I'm sorry, a total of 16 exterior parking spaces. There are also twin bicycle storage areas within the buildings. Susan is going to speak about that a little bit more when she talks more about the interiors of the buildings. There is a 1,500-square-foot patio that I mentioned earlier that will abut the community space. The doors will open directly onto that space, and that is, that size of that space is in accordance with the zoning regulations to meet the amenity standards. We are enhancing the look of the monument area with mostly landscaped area and so on. There is no substantial physical improvement to the monument, but we are framing it with additional trees, as you can see here, to assist in providing a public feel to the monument area, whereas still providing a, a more secluded patio area for security reasons. There is extensive green space throughout the site. We have provided, I believe it was 38 trees throughout the site, shade trees that will provide additional shade, and all of the, the green space that you see identified in the darker green here will be all planted areas. I would like to note that we, I know this is another hot button for most commissions, is we have provided about 1,500 square feet of cumulative snow storage identified in the yellow here. Due to the sizing of the 16 Pleasant Street parcel, we could not accommodate double-sided parking, so I utilize this as the majority of the snow storage. And the grading of these areas is such that any contamination from snow storage would essentially leak off in the direction of the focal points and be treated prior to exiting the property. As far as site lighting is concerned, I know it's hard to see because they're small. Those small stars identify the location of the lights. Currently, the developer's looking at architectural lighting that is 100% downlit. In other words, it's dark sky compliant most of the time. Nowadays, they are 300, they are 3,000 Kelvin, which is beneficial to nightlife and birds and so on like that. And the, we are looking at two potential designs. We have the standard light luminaire, and then we have the more historic gooseneck luminaire that is more in line with a lot of the historic development, Bigelow Commons and so on, in the general vicinity of Thompsonville District. I'd also like to note that-
If I may, before you leave the lights, could you put that back up with the lights?
Sure.
I counted 13. Is that about right?
Something, yes, 13, 13 or 14? Yes.
Would you be inclined to add additional ones?
I, I definitely speak to the, to the developer about that.
I'm definitely looking down here towards that back parking lot that's to the west, as an instance, and even maybe towards Chapel Street. I'm just, just making comments out loud here.
Sure, understood. Absolutely.
I, I expect the developer would be receptive to that.
Okay, thank you.
I will note, just for the record, that this has been run through a full photometrics plan and that the entire site does achieve life safety concern, in fact, higher because it is a residence, and there is no throw-off site, but the entire site itself is, is satisfactory from a photometric standpoint for life safety purposes.
Okay.
Are we good, anything?
Yep, nope. Have more questions where you were hearing this?
Sure.
The, if you go back to the slide you had prior to this, you had, well, not that one, way back before the detail, the swash of land between the two parcels you did not purchase-
Yes.
Is highlighted in the yellow in the other slide, but it's not highlighted here. So did you guys, are you guys purchasing that right away, or is that still, you're not?
I'll speak to that. That is, we do have a purchase and sale agreement with that owner, and at this point, the proposed use, for lack of a better word, is to, to just grass that area.
Up in the air. Okay, okay, thanks. Yep, thank you.
Sure.
Since that's currently being discussed, I will mention that there is a screening fence that will run along the property boundary here, and then, well, the property boundary does extend down, as Peter just mentioned, this, this will be grassed temporarily, but there will be a gate to allow mowing access for this at the time. There is also a bus stop identified directly adjacent to building A, directly adjacent on the street line, but on, at the frontage of the property, which is also ideal with regard to the transit-oriented development portion of this. Now, I'd like to speak in detail about the parking associated with this. I know this has been one of the big questions with regard to that. I will state from the beginning, just so everyone is clear, that we do meet the parking regulations as stipulated, but I'd like to explain a bit more how that works. So without going into full detail on this, for the 70 units, we're providing two studio, 27 one-bedroom, and 41 two-bedroom. So that accounts for one space per bedroom and two spaces per two-bedroom. So with that math, we are acquiring, in order to be in accordance with the zoning regulations, 111 spaces onsite. As previously stated, we are providing 76 spaces, 70 which is able to be utilized by the residents, six of those need to be reserved for the office space. So when you do this, when you do the math, it's 111 spaces minus 70 spaces, there are 41 spaces that we still need to allocate somewhere. As part of Section 8.124.6 of the TD5 zoning regulation for the, for Thompsonville- As part of Section 8.124.6 of the TD5 zoning regulation for the, for Thompsonville, there, it is legally permissible on-street parking, parking within municipal parking lots, providing they are within 500 feet of the site in question, may be used to satisfy up to 50% of the parking requirement. So I don't have, I don't think I have drawing ability here. Let me see if this pen, no, it doesn't work. That's all right. 500 feet would be approximately to the far side of this portion of the Bigelow Commons. It will stretch all the way down to the edge of my screen right here. It will incorporate the municipal lot that's located off of us, Nuntuck, right here. Come, come over here, and then it will run up just beyond the edge of Russell Street and then up to the top. When we performed a analysis of all of the parking associated with this area, along Pleasant Street, along Church Street, along Russell Street, and other areas directly in vicinity within 500 feet, including the municipal lot, there are a total of 103 spaces observed in that 500-foot boundary area. If you do the math associated with that, it's 103 total spaces minus the 41 spaces that are needed to satisfy the requirement for the parking. There are still 62 spaces available within that 500 feet, 500 feet that can be utilized by anyone in the neighborhood and so on. Therefore, the development potentially needs less than one-half of the available parking onsite. Now, I'd like to take a quick step back and, and mention something with regard to this. This is a transit-oriented development. We are providing a substantial amount of bicycle space. We are providing bicycle rooms. We are providing substantial amounts of pedestrian access to the train station located nearby. There is a bus station located directly, a bus stop located directly at the property. The bus stop does, it's the yellow line. I can't remember exactly where it goes, but I do believe it goes to some local grocery stores and so on. I'd like to note the fact that the two-bedroom units equal 41, we are 41 two-bedroom units at two spaces per unit. Coincidentally, we need 41 spaces that are still required. It is reasonable to assume, as a transit-oriented development, with the number of additional transportation options that we have, that an expectation for every two-bedroom unit to have two vehicles per unit is not necessarily, does not need to be the case. There is no calculation to determine what the reduction might be. However, it could be all the way, it could be up to 41 spaces that would not need to use these 41 spaces that are off-site. So I just wanted to reiterate the fact that I know parking is the biggest concern associated with here. The tradition behind a transit-oriented development is to focus that there will be other uses besides parking utilized in this area. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation back over to Susan Odell, who will give a little bit more information on the architectural itself.
Can we ask questions during?
Yeah. Please. Go ahead, Nick.
May I ask?
Your mic.
May I ask, was, I, I noticed in the plans that there are sections under both buildings that are unexcavated. Was there any thought about excavating those, one of those sections and having parking underneath in the basement area?
The sizing of the building itself would only allow, and the structural analysis associated with that, would only allow a very small amount of parking under there. If it were to be, if the entire, underneath the building area could be potentially looked at, but that's not part of the initial design for it, and it would only add a percentage. I, I don't believe we would be able to satisfy the requirement even with that. And a cost associated with a below-grade parking facility would substantially increase the cost. It's in particular in the fact that we were still satisfying the parking requirement, based on the way the regulations have been written. If we were not satisfying the parking requirement, there were probably other avenues that could have been investigated.
Thank you.
Do you guys mind if we ask some questions in the middle of your presentation, or would you rather?
Not at all. I, I would just note further that structured parking and underground parking is almost never part of mixed-income tax credit developments because of the prohibitive costs, and state agencies are reluctant to assign sort of precious public subsidies to things like parking.
Right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I can also add that that was an alternative that staff brought up during one of the ARTs, and it just wasn't feasible because of the size.
Yeah. Yeah. I knew that was brought up in ART. But you still, you have a question?
I still have a question.
Yeah.
Because you seem to allude that parking would be available at Bigelow Commons. Have you agreements with them? I mean, that's a liability for them to allow non-residents to park on their property. So, and, and I want to be clear, because you're making this presentation on television, people are watching it. If they park there, can they park there? Can't they park there? Is it a public parking lot?
It's not a public parking lot. It's private. We have explored discussions with Bigelow Commons, and we do not have an agreement. We are not counting any parking as part of that private development in the calculations that we just showed.
Okay. Thank you.
These are only on public streets and public, the public lot.
Okay. No. Because, you know, he showed it, and he showed the big parking area.
It's within the 500 feet.
Right.
So I appreciate you raising it because it's confusing. We are not expecting or counting any parking as part of Bigelow Commons.
I apologize for not clarifying that.
Okay. Okay. Please, continue. Thank you for letting us ask some questions.
Anything further?
I think that's it for now?
Oh, yes. The magic mouse.
The magic mouse. Okay. See if I can, hello?
Keep it on.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to run through the architectural review, design intent, review of the floor plans, the elevations, material selections, and energy efficiency. Design intent, the bullet points are to infill a prominent site in an appropriate manner, to fit into the existing historic neighborhood, to define the urban space by placing buildings along the street edge with parking behind, to highlight the monument area, and to improve the look of the neighborhood. We looked at the historic worker housing districts surrounding the Bigelow Mill, and we found a compelling building profile along Pleasant Street with these, this sort of march of similar shapes here. And in fact, this photo is from Google Earth. I was happy to see, I drove by this evening, and they have been recited, and they really look great, so much better than this photo shows, which is an aside. So this profile became our design theme, and this was encouraged and approved by the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office. Moving on to the floor plans. So we start with the first floor of Building A. We have approximately 1,600 square feet of office space with a separate entrance along the North Main Street side of the building. The other entrance here leads to a residential lobby with a mailroom and a package room, and two elevators that serve the three upper floors. There are four residential units on this floor. Where did my mouse go? There it is. Yeah. So there are the four residential units. The typical upper floor has seven generously sized units. The one-bedrooms are 759 square feet. The two-bedrooms are either 800 square feet in the, or 1,000 square feet, in the case of the one in the middle here. In-unit amenities include washer-dryer hookups, energy-efficient heat pumps for heating and air conditioning, generous closet space, spacious kitchens that are open to the living areas, and large operable windows for fresh air and sunlight. The second, third, and fourth floors of Building A are identical. The basement here, it's a partial basement to house mechanical equipment, maintenance space, and bike storage for the residents. The total square footage for Building A without the basement is 30,728.
Let's go through.
To move on to the facades of Building A.
Excuse me. One of the commissioners has a question.
I do have a question. Where is the tenant's storage in Building A? We require storage for tenants, and I don't see anything in any of these plans.
So I failed to mention the closet. It's included in the generous closet space.
Can you go back?
Whoops. Yep. Sorry. Went the wrong way. So you'll see a large closet in each unit. Really testing my eyes here. I think that's one of them there. The largest closet without a, without a rod and shelf showing is the storage closet.
So there is no storage for the tenants in the basement? There's no-
There's bicycle storage for the tenants in the basement.
Bicycle, but no, but no screened-in areas for each tenant?
No. We find, Paul Bailey Architects has been doing affordable housing for more than 30 years, and our clients universally do not want tenant storage of that type.
Okay. Thank you.
You might note CHFA's storage requirements, too.
Right. The closets in the units meet CHFA's design guidelines for storage.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the elevations. The facade of Building A shows a separation of materials that identify the public space as separate from the private space. Brick and storefront glass. Let me go to the next slide. Brick and storefront glass along North Main Street define the office space, while clavert style cladding, wood trim, and double-hung windows indicate the residential spaces above. A traditional New England sloped roof defines the upper edge of the building, but that sloped roof hides a modern convenience of a flat roof area in the center where the mechanical equipment can remain obscured from view. Moving on to the first floor of Building B, you see again a residential lobby here with a mail area and a package room, and two elevators serving the upper floors. There are eight residential units on this floor. The floor also holds the fitness room at this end and the community room at this end, which are residential amenities. The community room has a kitchenette here and a bathroom, and separate entrances to the outdoor patio. These features make it ideal to hold larger residence, resident meetings, and also enable the residents to host private celebrations that exceed their unit's capacity. This room will also be available to be rented by the community for similar purposes. The second and third floors of Building B have 13 units each with the same amenities and features that I mentioned for Building A. The fourth floor of Building B has 11 units due to the step-down of each end of the building here and here that I'll show you in the elevations in a minute. Again, the basement contains mechanical and electrical and maintenance rooms and bicycle storage for the tenants. Building B's total square footage without the basement is 51,373. The facades of Building B clearly show the design theme that references the historic worker housing. You see the outline here. We used it to strategically break down the mass of the four-story building so that it better fits into the existing neighborhood. These forms are used along the links of the building here, and again, on each end, to enable the step-down mentioned earlier. So that the fourth floor is just this portion, and the third-floor roof on either side of it. And that, again, is to better meet the residential character, especially the, I believe it's the north elevation on Building B that faces Church Street, is it?
Yes.
No, not-
Faces Chapel.
Chapel. Thank you. There are more elevations. So again, the materials differentiate the public and private space. Brick and storefront glass along the, at the community room and the fitness room. Brick with double-hung windows at the first-floor units, and clavert-style cladding, wood trim, and double-hung windows indicate the residential spaces above. A note on energy efficiency. These buildings will be constructed to Energy Star standards at a minimum, and due to the funding requirements that we are applying for, will most likely meet the Emerald level of the National Green Building Standard. Included are Energy Star appliances, energy-efficient electric heat pumps, LED light fixtures, double-pane low-E windows, a continuous insulation layer in the exterior walls to reduce thermal bridging, advanced air sealing techniques throughout the building. Resilience will be provided for with a generator that will provide conditioned space, a place to charge phones, and refrigerated space for medications in the community room in the event of an extended power outage. Photovoltaic systems will be installed on the roofs. EV charging stations for electric vehicles will be provided for. And finally, residential education will be provided on all of these features to ensure that they are used to their fullest.
And hopefully, if I can, we can get back and you can maybe show us where the EV charging stations are going to go? Thank you.
So here's a summary of the architectural, and also some of the site features. I won't read through them, but those are some of the points that I touched on earlier.
Address the chair's question. I'll return to the portion of the site plan. I apologize for not noting that during the presentation as far as the EV chargers.
Here we go.
There are twin EV chargers identified, whoops, twin EV chargers identified here for, there's two spaces per charger, so there will be four spaces here, and then there are two additional chargers that are hard to see, they are buried in here, but they will also serve these four. So there will be eight total, and I believe that they are in accordance with the latest legislation with regard to percentages associated with EV chargers for this-sized development.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for pointing that out.
Sure.
And if I can get back to you one question. You mentioned, you know, roundabout way, the security. Could you go through the, basically, the security that you're going to be having on this site? Again, I thought you said you were going to have photo, light, cameras. Could you go through that again? Or maybe I misunderstood?
I didn't mention security specifically. I don't know if anyone else did. But typically, our affordable housing projects do have cameras, both onsite, on the site itself, and inside the buildings, in the stairwells and corridors. The, they typically have key-card entry, so you can't just walk in off the street. They will have typically a push button to ring the residents above, but the residents typically cannot release the door. They have to walk down to let someone in.
Walk down.
So those are the standard security features.
Thank you. Thank you. Pretty good.
As well as abundant lighting and fencing.
Yeah.
Fencing, all the parameters will be included in the site.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm all set. I think we're going to wrap up with some benefits to the town.
Yes. So in summary, this particular transit-oriented development proposal provides a variety of benefits to the town of Enfield and Thompsonville in particular. It's increasing the housing densities in the neighborhood within walking distance, within one-half mile of the new rail station, providing bike racks, interior unit storage, and the amenities that we've discussed. It will provide onsite management and maintenance services, resident services, including an onsite fitness center, social services, and planned resident activities. IRD committed a $40,000 contribution to the historic renovations associated with the Pearl Street Library when we were undergoing state historic preservation office review in the spring. That's no longer required because the building on Pleasant Street has been removed, but IRD has kept its commitment to the improvements for the Pearl Street Library. We are also, will be donating a portion of the town-owned parcels that are adjacent to our commercial neighbor to the south. I believe the owner is Ronnie Salas, and a portion of his existing driveway and parking areas bled into the town-owned property. We are going to deed that over to Ronnie so that it does not interfere with his business. And we want to continue to support local businesses, and that, and that's just one small way. I know he has a tenant that's salon and barber. I know we have a restaurant adjacent to us. I know we have a restaurant adjacent to us, Sylvia's, and, I mean, I stopped in there myself and, and spoke to the owner. She prepared a delicious sandwich and was very excited to hear about the additional residents who would be moving into this development. The onsite community room will be, as was mentioned, open to neighborhood residents for a nominal rental fee for cleanup for their own parties and, and any kinds of community events that are, that are appropriate. So, Chris?
So in conclusion, members of the commission, we, I'm sorry, sorry about that. In conclusion, we respectfully submit that the proposed development does comply with your zoning regulations for the Thompsonville District Five by providing needed, needed residents, specifically, we're, we're looking at 70 individuals, families, and then their guests in the neighborhood that would promote both the retention and growth of the existing businesses and the commercial properties that you have in the immediate vicinity of the neighborhood to the subject property. The proposed development will also promote affordable, I'm sorry, promote housing diversity as well as affordable housing opportunities in the neighborhood in close proximity to the planned commuter rail station. And these benefits or attributes associated with the proposal respectfully submit are consistent with good transit oriented planning, your zoning regulations, your P O C D, and as, as well as your affordable housing plan. And we thank you for your time and look forward to responding to any questions that you may have, further questions, as well as from the public. And again, on behalf of the applicant developer and our team, we thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for a nice presentation. Well done, thank you. Open up the commission for questions at this point. Commissioner Lefakis.
In the future, when you submit the-
When you submit the final plans, page C 1.0, right in the center it says maintain access to 14 Prospect, you probably want to change that to Pleasant.
Yes, thank you.
And I noticed building A has a trash room on each floor, and I noticed building B doesn't. I, I didn't see it identified. It's there?
Should we pull it up?
Okay.
It is, it is there. My very excellent boss, Paul Bailey, always puts trash rooms in his designs and the clients almost universally don't want them. So it's up to the client ultimately whether they want the trash room and the maintenance responsibility to keep it clean and maintained, or whether they would want the residents to carry their own trash to the dumpsters. In, in the case that it is not a trash room, then it becomes a maintenance space or janitor space.
Thank you.
You all set, Nick?
Yes.
Anybody else, Commissioner D'Antonio?
Okay. Yeah, I, I have a few things. One, I definitely would, would like to commend A plus effort on drainage, low impact development. That's great to see. We don't see too many of those applications. I don't think that this one would be particularly easy to do. There is a lot of pavement, so well done there. Energy efficiency also, great to see. Heat pumps are very efficient, having the units even more efficient, just having so many units together conserve a lot of heat and cooling. On that note, I think you alluded to it about the mechanicals, I think the heat pump condensers then will be on the roofs. I think that's the assumption, okay. And I'll also commend on the, of course, is a TOD project and, and you, you, you applied it well with the train station, of course, is, is the primary driver, but recognizing the bus stop and with the local bus route, the, actually, the commuter bus route also does stop there, not as frequently as the local bus route, but, but that does stop there. So just something to be aware of, it's CT Transit, the 905 route. Bike parking, really well done, really nice to see. Again, we, we don't see that many projects where that's emphasized at all. So I commend you on that. Both the, the inside parking, plentiful, great. The outside parking I did notice, or you had mentioned eight stall bike racks, I would just make a note, so I am a cyclist myself, as far as actual use, secure and useful bike parking, I, I hope you consider either like the wave designs, possibly a design you're going for, or just even the basic inverted U, very simple, often very affordable. Those are preferred over grid style, which are like the classic, like in front of a school building. They, they look all right, they're instantly identifiable, but actually from, from a cyclist's perspective, nobody likes the grid style bike racks. So-
Thank you.
I do have a bit on landscaping, but I, but I want to come back to that. As far as the back of the property out to Pleasant Street, so today there's stairs there, so it seems like the plan is to get rid of the stairs and just replace with a ramp. Is there any consideration for possibly having both? Or is that in the design?
Well, it doesn't matter what plan I'm on. The intent behind our design, and sorry for not clarifying this, so there is a historic wall that is located right there.
Right.
The intent behind this ramp, actually, the historic wall essentially stops in this orientation, and then this is currently a curb cut into the existing 16 Pleasant parking area. We, our thought behind this was to maintain the existing historic wall. The stairs, the, the orientation of the stairs do not allow for access down them, but it is not our intention to strictly remove them. The intent would be to essentially disassemble the stairs and then reassemble the wall back with the remaining stairs. We recognize that that is a historic feature, it is on the, it is located in the historic district area, and that was incorporated into the design. It actually, the way the grading worked out for this development, it actually functions very well for the ramp to essentially ramp down to Pleasant Street, and there would almost be a planter created using the existing stone wall and then potentially a reclaim or new type of wall around the back where the ramp would be. So that was thought of, and there would probably be some type of planting or something on there just for a decorative-
Right. So stairs removed, just, it, it just doesn't work out, basically.
Correct. We would utilize the existing historic stair as part of a reemplacement of that portion of the wall.
Understood, right.
Good use.
Yep, yeah, good use. As far as, I know there's a lot of talk on, on parking. Personally, I totally understand exactly where you guys are coming from. That is, that is absolutely the case with transit oriented development, it should require less parking than, than traditional development. Is there any considerations on, this isn't necessarily part of, of the plan, and this could just be something to take forward. Obviously, it's not legally required by us or anywhere in the state, but consideration for splitting rent and parking so that residents that have fewer vehicles do not have to pay for parking vehicles that they don't own. So again, you're in a transit oriented development, just a consideration, so that looks like, you know, average resident paying X for rent and parking, and then, you know, resident with one or two fewer vehicles could possibly pay X minus parking cost, consideration. As far as the units themselves, are there any differences in terms of, within the units themselves of finish or appliances between market rate and affordable?
Yes, none. It's not allowed.
Great, okay. Okay, and then, and then finally, this, this is my biggest piece about landscaping and specifically the trees around the building. So I, so I do commend you, this is a very impressive landscaping plan. There's two main things that concern me with the landscaping though. One is proximity to the buildings, especially the, the species selected. So I do commend you, I did notice, I looked through the entire species list, recognized most of them, all native species. So again, another thing to commend you on, not sure if anybody else noticed that, but that's great, great to, again, support the local ecosystem. But, but yeah, the trees around building A and building B, i- if I go out with a ruler and measure that, they're, they're planted about five feet from the building. Those, those trees at maturity will be much, much larger than 10, 15, even 20 feet in, in diameter. So that, that is a concern. I mean, it seems like there is space to plant further from the building and continue to use the proposed species. I'm not sure if you guys worked with a landscape architect, but that is, that is definitely a, a serious concern. I have, I don't want to see an elimination of them, but I do want to see them pushed out from the buildings further.
Would that be something you can be willing to go back and review?
We have in-house landscape architecture at BSC. They have, they did design this plan. There, if there's an option for the trees to get placed farther away from the building, that is, that is definitely possible. I do know that they are conscious of what they are choosing and the type of materials and type of plantings that they are specifying. I will bring that back and get more information from them on that.
Would it be possible for you to give us a schematic at the next meeting, possibly with them shown farther back from the buildings in option, option B?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, highly encouraged. For, for the sake of the, the property long-term, for the sake of everybody, those trees will need more space. And, and planting so close, we're talking like shrubs or, or small trees that should be planted that close.
Good catch, Chris.
And then also on the, while talking about landscaping, the other, the other concern I had was the removal of existing landscaping. So I mean, I can't speak to the health of, of the existing trees, I can't even speak to the, the species. They were noted broadly, various maples and oak or two that exist on the property today, especially the perimeter of the property. It doesn't seem like there was, there was any attempt to, to work with those. And in fact, there, there's several places in the plan where there's, there's plantings that replace these, these mature vegetation. So we're talking like, these are like, noted on the, the plans, they're like eight to, to 12 inch diameter trees, so we're talking like 50-year-old trees, not at full growth, but still decent sized trees that you're going to replace with, you know, 10-year-old trees. So that doesn't make sense to me. I think the only, the only tree preserved is the, the birch in front of the, the monument, so.
If I may, we are very likely to pursue Emerald level National Green Building Standard, which does have requirements to preserve existing vegetation whenever possible. So we just haven't reached that level of scrutiny to seriously look at the existing vegetation, assess its health, assess whether it can survive construction. Unfortunately, a lot of these time, you know, so many times, the roots will just get run over during construction, and it's not a healthy situation. But along the perimeter especially, we will revisit that as a, as a component of that National Green Building Standard.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to just point out a few, few specific ones that I do note is the North Main Street, right in front of building A. There's a sidewalk, and I understand the sidewalk is, is a straight line, direct access to building A, which of course is nice and convenient, but again, we're talking about replacing a mature maple over there with, with, with a planting 10 feet away to the north. So, so that, that one, that one stands out to me, whereas, you know, it could possibly, you know, again, strong consideration if we could just route the sidewalk around the existing planting.
Well, unfortunately, you have to take in mind that there will be significant excavation for the foundations of building A that exceed the footprint. So depending on how close the tree is to the proposed building, it, it may not survive. And with all due respect to maples, I love them, I have plenty of them in my yard, they're, they're quick growing and hardy, and they will quickly, if you replace a maple, you're going to have a nice looking maple in a very few years.
I think we can certainly agree to do a survey of the existing trees and, and take a look at the site plan and see what capacity we have to retain any of the existing mature trees on the site. It's often very difficult with a tight site like this, given the amount of parking that's required-
Right.
-and the building footprints, you don't have a lot of remaining sort of green space. You can see what's there, and we're certainly trying to landscape what's there.
So if I make a, make a suggestion on this, if I may, Chris, if you have, if you can give staff a list of those trees that you're concerned about, staff will pass that on to you guys. Does that sound like a plan?
Right, yeah, and, or at least I'd, I'd like to see kind of, I, I don't know if an alternative landscaping plan would, would, would be, but, you know, a potential like, hey, this is what we're going to seek to, kind of, kind of the invert of what, what exists today. So what exists today is, hey, we're going to basically take out and, and just plant all new, whereas I want to see, this is what we're going to strive for.
Because we're going to need that.
And if we can't do that-
We're going to need that. If you guys haven't done your inventory and you don't really know what the next grant company is going to allow you to tear down or not, that doesn't comply with our, with our landscaping plan. We need to know which ones you're going to keep and which ones you're not sooner or later.
So I'm going to be very blunt here. The only ones you're going to be able to keep are the ones around the parking, the farther, the side of the parking away from the buildings. Anything around the buildings themselves is not going to survive, with the exception of anything near the monument.
So maybe the ones in the center?
I was looking at, yeah, the, the west end along, because that parking already exists, so that's probably being renovated but not re-excavated.
Yeah, so the tree, anything that's sort of bordering our, our neighbor, our neighbors along Pleasant Street could potentially be saved because there's not as much happening there in, in terms of excavation.
Right, okay. Those stood out as well, yeah, so.
The small, the lighter green areas here were the, the noted trees. So we performed the survey for the site, and we ensure that when we provide, we provide our surveys, we make sure that our surveyors take those trees, and that is the point behind those being identified. We kept as many of those as we could in there. I also note, I'd also want to note that the property boundary that is identified right here is relatively arbitrary located. There is a large stand of existing trees that exists on 14 Pleasant right behind it. So the, as you drive by the site, the, the, the look of the trees that exist in that area, a large number of them will remain because they are not on our property. So, and to Susan's point, there is, you know, we, we will do everything we can to maintain as much as we, we could, and it's, we try to do that for most of our designs as it is. We just understand, especially based on the size of a building like this, the size of the foundations, and at what point, even if we're in the close proximity to those trees, even with a 40% root removal, the tree ultimately is dead in two years. So it's, you know, we were, that's, and ultimately what happens.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate here, I, I don't think I got quite this view in the, in the plans provided, which were a little more, you know, hey, here's existing, here's new. But, but I do appreciate now that you pointed out, I was wondering about the, the faded colors.
It is definitely something we could look at though.
Right, thanks.
You all set, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, great application, great presentation. Yeah, I think you guys did a really good job.
Commissioner Holinski.
Yeah, I wonder if you could elaborate on both vehicle and pedestrian traffic impacts. I know you did a pretty extensive traffic study, which basically said it's not going to be an issue. But one of my concerns is, I think the mix of, my, my opinion, the mix of residents for this facility are going to be mostly people who work in- residents for this facility are going to be mostly people who work in town. You know, they're not going to be taking the train to Hartford, I think, for employment, or at least not a high percentage of them, in my opinion. And so you're going to see a rush hour of 71-plus vehicles coming in and out of that parking lot, and the roads are narrow in that area. So I'm just a little concerned about us developing a traffic problem in that area. And point number two, I think we're going to have some pedestrian traffic issues in that you have one bus stop, and it's the yellow bus, which has a particular circuit. But we already have problems with people migrating to the mall and fast food restaurant areas along Elm Street up through here, and also on Hazard Avenue, where there are no sidewalks, where people are walking across the bypass over Route 91 to get to work. A lot of the people who might qualify for affordable housing would be working at the fast food restaurants, which are on the other side of 91. Okay? So I've got some concerns about that. And basically, it sounds like we would need more mass transit capability in the area of this complex from a pedestrian standpoint. And also, I'm concerned about the automobile traffic.
I can look more into, in coordination for the next meeting, speaking with my traffic engineer, I can also ask him to come if that be the case. I do know, as far as to answer your first question with regard to the peak morning, the morning hour, rush hour timeframe, that that was analyzed using industry standard IT practices, and the increase in the amount of traffic associated with that was negligible for this development in relation to other developments of this size. He can speak more clearly on the specifics of that, but that was analyzed as part of our traffic assessment. As far as the pedestrian, I would have to go back. There are some additional investigative tools that the Transportation Department can run with regard to mass transit in this case. We can look at those and try to provide a more accurate answer to your question with regard to that, but I can definitely look at something like that.
Okay, thank you.
One second. Chris, your degree?
I know you have an easement to the property, 14 Pleasant Street. How are you going to prevent your overflow cars from going into his property and into 12 Pleasant Streets property to park? I mean, those are private property. And I do know that, you know, those people have that easement to go through your property into theirs for their parking areas. So I didn't see any signage on any of these plans. Like, how are you going to prevent that? Because if I, two cars, and there's only so many parking places, and it's snowing, I don't want to walk from what, you know, down a block to get my car, or to come back home with groceries. So I'm just asking that question, because I didn't see anything to prevent me from going into his lot and parking.
I think you raise a good point, which is signage would be important in that way. Now, we can't place signs on property that we don't occupy, but we can put, certainly put signs on our own.
Right.
That notifies our residents that parking is prohibited in any of these adjacent private parcels. Obviously, it works the other way, too.
I agree.
Residents in those properties might try and use this parking.
Because it's all cleaned off already.
So it's a matter of, you know, I think monitoring, that becomes a management issue over time, is how I find that gets.
But I didn't see any signage like from your property. Thank you.
Signage is important for that.
Where are the properties that you're alluding to? I'm looking here.
All right. You see where you drive in?
Yeah.
Right there, right there.
But you're going to have a fence right around all your properties, correct?
That's an easement.
No, there will be, this, there's an existing access easement that coincidentally coincides with the aisle to access. So North Pleasant Street right here, actually.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
14.
14 Pleasant, okay, very good.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions? I'm going, I noticed people in the audience who want to speak, so I'm going to skip staff for a second. I know, George, if you don't mind, I want to get to the public. So you guys probably need to vacate. So yeah, give us a second here so they can vacate, and I'll ask for the public who want to speak for or against this application. You're probably going to come back, so you don't need to vacate everything, but, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to support or against this application? Clown up.
Thank you.
Kelly Hemler, 10 Hartford Ave.
Kelly, can you pull up, yeah, thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, thank you.
My biggest concern is parking. I live a couple streets down from Church Street and Pleasant Street, so I'm looking out for my neighbors who live on those streets. As of now, every day, if you go down there, there is no, especially Church Street, both sides of the street, there's no, there's no parking. Pleasant Street on a good day is mostly filled up as well. And this housing project is going to add 41, potentially more, 41 or more cars to be parked. It doesn't even include if somebody has a guest in their apartment. In the winter, all the cars have to be off the streets, and this is something that me and my neighbors on Hartford Ave, we have to deal with that every winter, everybody has, because we use the street to park. And I'm sure that all the municipal lots, which are not that big, are probably already full. So if you add 41 more, you're really, you're making life more difficult for the people on Church Street and Pleasant Street. You're just adding more competition. I would also be concerned about public safety, because obviously more cars parked on the street. It's going to be harder for, you know, it's going to impact fire truck access. And I just wouldn't want to see that. So with these, I mean, I know that they're talking about bicycle racks and the train. The train is not there yet. And bicycle racks, that's great, but we live in New England, you know? I know you're a bicyclist, and you probably do ride in January. I'm not getting on a bike in January. So that's, to me, that's just, that's lunacy. Then there's community rooms, which sounds great. I mean, the buildings are beautiful. But where are they going to park? You know, I'm sure they're not coming in on the bus, they're not coming in on the train that's not there, and I'm sure they're not coming in on a bicycle. And there's another thing I heard through this whole presentation. I heard a couple times that they said that there was financial prohibitions to putting, you know, more parking, or, but I thought that was one of the things that P&amp;Z is not supposed to consider. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure you're not supposed to consider that. And so I'm just, I'm just asking you all to be looking out for the people that already live there, live in this neighborhood. And I just don't want, I don't want to see their, you know, these issues directly affecting their neighborhood, their neighborhoods and their properties. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to come in front and speak? Yeah, please.
Patricia Burns, 16A Windsor Street. I'm a 37-year resident in Thompsonville. I lived at one side of 16A, Gorman Avenue, that burnt down years ago, and then moved to where I have been for the last 36 years. I think this is good. I do agree with Kelly that the parking is an issue. I live where the end of my street is Windsor Court, which houses handicapped and elderly people. I also do medical on the weekends, which take care of the handicapped and elderly. So that is an issue, because we had to widen our street for the ambulance and the fire trucks. So that's an issue. I am in agreement with this new development, that we do need it. I have worked all my life and have, right now, just purchased a car that's getting work on, but I walk to work and walk home. I walk, I live, work in a daycare, right beginnings. And during the weekend, on the weekends, I go take care of patients. So yes, this is nice, because the building that I'm living in needs a, should be rehabbed. You know, you wouldn't want to live there. There's a lot of buildings throughout Thompsonville. So when I heard about this, I was looking at finally getting somewhere for somebody who's always paid taxes and worked. I brought up three children that are now in their 20s and 40s in Thompsonville. And my son, one thing to back them, my son lives at Windsor Station, that also doesn't not have storage. They have, what they do is they have like, almost like a walk-in closet for one of their closets, and the other ones, that's it, they don't have storage at all. And it's Windsor Station Apartments where he lives, and he's in a wheelchair. So, but I don't handicap, he's handicapped. He takes the bus to go into Hartford to work. So we can live without what Bigelow Commons has, because even Bigelow Commons, I know people who live there, and they have very little storage. So they have like a box, and that's, you know, a box about three seats, and that's their storage bin. So you can live without it if you, yeah, if you look at Two Dimes, and you look at a person like me that's trying to get out of a building that shouldn't be there, and into something that's better for my daughter, who still lives with me. You know, I want the best for my children. And we want the best for the future's children. And I know a lot of people that live in Thompsonville, that work would benefit from the building, if we can all work together on helping them get a place to park. It would, because they have one of those in Windsor that goes according to your income, too. And it's, it's, I think we're Dexter's? That's really nice. That goes according to your income. Really nice. We don't have anything in Enfield at all. My mother lives on the other side of Enfield, so there's nothing in Enfield at all, unless you're fully handicapped or on assistance. But if you're working, you're paying your bills, you either have, where I have, the rent is cheap, but not keeping what needs to be kept up is not good either, because two streets over is like 1,500, where my rent is cheap, but they don't do any. So my hat's off to you, and I would be willing to help all of you make this happen.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yep. Can we get the staff, please? Get the staff. Thank you. Yep, that's the procedure. That is a mic commission. Thank you.
Let's not argue. I haven't even got to the table yet, Lou. Mary Ann Turner, 7 Meadow Road.
Thank you.
I'm here on a different subject. Parking is an issue. But in your Rivergate study that you did a while back, you actually talk about parking. And one of the things it says is Enfield should be open to public-private partnerships. The town of Enfield could partner with a private developer to underwrite the cost of structured parking garage, utilizing the TIF as a method for financing the structure. Something to keep in the back of your mind is a possibility, especially since not all the property is going to be used, maybe, or the town needs to put its thinking cap on. Because parking is going to be a problem, not today, but from the vision of 60 years. 60 years ago, round figures, our forefathers, which were the you folks and the town, decided to get into urban renewal. And urban renewal took its toll on Thompsonville. I didn't live in your town. Many of you grew up here. You saw something I never saw. But I lived in Windsor Locks, and I saw what it did to us. We're a one-sided downtown that no longer exists. They tore it all down. There was probably reasons. And what I really found the reasons that made the most sense is that the forefathers or the commissioners didn't really have the vision that I think you folks have. You are the ones who saw what happened to us, and you see the future. Yes, we need housing. I'm not going to disagree with it. Okay? But Thompsonville needs its charm. We lost that. Windsor Locks lost that. Many towns around the United States lost that. This is your chance to be visionaries. Chris, and I don't know you very well, but I listened to you. You have things that are really important, and by being on this commission, you're able to articulate it to anyone who comes in front of you and make them understand the future. That's true. I don't ride a bike, but that doesn't mean there won't be trolleys coming down Enfield Street someday. It's coming, guys. The train station is coming. I know that some of the folks who grew up here are not sure it's going to show up, but I believe it'll be here before I die. We've waited a long time. Thompsonville has to be walkable. We have diamonds right now in that community. Corona's Market, Sylvia's Restaurant, Mark's Restaurant. Hopefully, Mr. Talarida will put in his fire brewery pizza place. I want it. But you know what? I might have to start riding a bike, because there's going to be no place for me to park, right?
Parking's a problem.
Those are what makes us have a vision, and that's what brings back a hamlet. That's what brings back charm. I'm not 100% sure that what you're going to be offered here this evening gives you that. Thompsonville is walkable as it is. But that looks like a big gigantic square structure, in my opinion, not very attractive. The pictures that I saw when I went on to your master packet, because that's how I looked at your online stuff of 600 and something pages, my guys always want me to double-side buy copies. I did, I saw the original photo in the front. That doesn't really seem like the photo that they're showing you that was in the back. The big, long, tall, unattractive building. Thompsonville, as I said, needs to be connected and walkable. Thompsonville already has people who have jobs. Lady just told you. She's been living here for 30 years, and she walks to her job. There's shopping, we have some. And I just want to remind you, the town of Enfield, along with the government, the federal government, put ARPA monies on the table. And we, the town of Enfield, had a vision. They used some of those monies, $250,000 of that money, and we gave 27 or something, us companies, small companies in this town to use those dollars. And Corona Market was one, and Sylvia's Restaurant was one, and they did facade updates. And I'm hoping that the town of Enfield, when we get more with the new, you know, sit down with the town manager, to see if there's any more funding for that. That's what's important to Thompsonville, to make those difference. But we took advantage of it. After reviewing tonight's information on this new housing project... After reviewing tonight's information on this new housing project, they hit many of the bells. They did. I'm not going to take anything from that. They did. And we need that to be in the TD5 district. But the attributes, the glaring change, the thing I'm asking you as visionaries to have is, we need the charm. The commissioners like you have the chance to make that change. The character of Thompsonville is at stake for this. The woman who spoke before said the house that she lives in needs an update. Maybe that's where we need to put more pressure for these things to happen. The folks that sat in front of us this evening were very positive at most of the times, but I felt a strong pushback at times of negative comments back to you, of not in a way of saying no to you, but implying to you that it was no, when they said, "This is how we'll get the funding. This is how we get those grants. This is how the government plays. I've done this before." Well, you know what? This is your chance to make sure that you get what Enfield really needs, and that this beautiful building will be beautiful to us 60 years from now. Because remember, that's what we're going to see coming down North Main to this beautiful park that we have put a lot of money in, right here. You folks have got to see it. Tonight, when I came in, I had to shoo the kids out of the street, because I said to them, "We're going to have a lot of company today, so you want to get out of the road here. They're using this park. They're on the playground. We're going to be playing there. We're going to be walking down there. There's going to be more food trucks out of the street. There is more businesses coming." I will take exception when they did put up their list of buildings that are a little in the rehab need. We all don't, you don't need to tell us what we know. We know. That's the reason why they're here. And I listened to this conversation when this started a couple of years ago, and there was a very specific look that was presented to the town. That's not this. This is not what they said. The building that you've got in front of you, this A, especially B, is sterile-looking. It's unattractive. It's plain. And yes, they can tell you that it looks like the housing on Pleasant Street, but ladies and gentlemen, I can't believe that that's really what you want to take and put in the front to be the footage of our Main Street, right? I think if we had the opportunity to change the housing stock that they built, probably at this point, 100 years ago, we wouldn't have made it look like that. So why would I want them to build something brand-spanky blue that looks like that? It's not pretty. Keep one thing in mind, you will be told, this is new. This is new. It is, until it's not new, and it's 30 years old, and it's 40 years old. And then what happens, and you mentioned it, great catch on the trees, because the trees will have to be cut down if they get too big, because they're leaning into the building, right? So you want to be prepared. I don't see how the front of Building B takes into consideration the picture that I gave you here, which shows this walking community with the storefronts. I heard what they said, that we don't have the capacity right now to fill those stores. But if you go back when you get bored and listen to this meeting another time, they also said, but I, with my 35 years of experience, have seen them grow into it. We asked them, when we put the RFP out, to build us a walkable storefront building-type apartments. That's not what you have in front of you. I can't show you the picture. You have it in front of you, but I don't have access to show you their picture. But it's this big, long, strong building that's going to be A, and I don't see where the, how the sidewalk, so that there's a walking path in there, and even though they're saying there's some, there's some access inside the building, which is not going to be anything where they rent space to a hairdresser or to a small restaurant, of walking in front of that big, long monstrosity of Building B. It's just, it's not working for me. That's why I showed you this. I know this isn't us, but this is our vision. This is what we want. This is, when we go and take time to put our money and say, "Hey, my husband, my wife, my best friend, I want to go on vacation." You know where we don't go? There. We go to Kennebunkport. We go to Ogonquin. We go to Boston. We want to walk around. We want to stop in a store. We want to get a cup of coffee. We want to stop and have a little bite to eat. Our vision that you've heard from our council previous and now, from commissioners like you, from the POCD, which I have sat on twice, is a vision that makes Thompsonville charming. We need to get our appeal back. Before I go, in the Rivergate study, and I didn't bring a copy, but I think you have this, but I'll leave it for you, Lori.
Do you have the date on that?
I wish I could tell you, but whoever did this, they didn't date it.
Okay, thanks.
There was a couple of them.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember back. All right, thank you.
River Gateway 4, they talk about the River Gateway vision. "The purpose was to allow housing and services in direct proximity of the planned rail station while leveraging the unique assets of the freshwater brook and the Connecticut River to benefit the residents of Enfield and protect and showcase the natural features." That's not doing it. "Its primary and permitted uses were retail lodging, food service." That's not doing it. The River Gateway 5, the purpose, "The purpose of the River Gate 5 is to preserve and provide walkable neighborhood, commercial districts that build upon the historic function of Thompsonville's retail areas. Development in this zone will include a mixture of retail, restaurant, services, office space, residential, and serve the local residents and future rail commuters." Folks, you know how many, how many of you, besides me, have sat on studies, who this town of Enfield has poured in probably hundreds of thousands of dollars in studies? All I'm asking you, the keys are in your pocket. Please be the visionaries. Please do not build something that you would not be proud of when you bring your friends and neighbors to Enfield and say, "Let me show you what we've done." You want to really see done? Go to Darien. Go to Hamden. Go to Old Saybrook. Go, these are towns, now, they may not be us, but you know what? Can be us. I am tired of being the second child. Yes, we have a mean of what people make, but they also deserve to have a beautiful spot in Thompsonville to be the hamlet that we should have had, and we need to get back. We took it down for a reason. I'm not going to take anything from that, but we also have a chance to get it back. And this is in it. They hit many of the bells and whistles. I won't take that from them. But they do not give you the facade you deserve. Enfield deserves better, and I'm asking you, please use whatever tools you can to come up with a look that makes Enfield better, not plain Jane. So I did have a couple of things that maybe you kick on your list. When you put in the bus, at the bus stop, will there be a bus shelter? I would be curious to see what other type of buildings types that they've built, since they have experience at it. I'd like to see pictures of them, and I'd like to know what has happened in those facilities that, I'm going to make you laugh. My husband and I built a house 20 years ago. We put everything we possibly could dream up in it. And you know what happened? I think of all the things that I wish I did, right? Really, every time. This is your chance to make sure that we find out what they did, people who are already living in it, what would they do better? Doesn't mean that this is wrong. Doesn't mean what we finally get to will be incorrect. Lou? I was quiet.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't hear any chatting. I'm sorry. Please, no talking. They apologize.
So all I'm saying to you is, you've kind of got my drift. I hope that you do not close the public hearing, that this stays open for a while. Really and truly, ladies and gentlemen of Enfield, if you're watching this, I know it's late, you probably went to bed, you need to be in this room. I'm asking you all, whoever's out there in TV land, this is important to you, Enfield. This will make a difference. Put, put your two cents in. Don't shoot it down. We want this. We just don't want, Mary Ann Turner just doesn't want the look of this. I want better. I want better.
Thank you. The applicant does have an opportunity to respond to somebody's comments or concerns that the public has brought up, but I would like, it is getting late. I would like to recommend that we keep the public hearing open tonight, unless staff has something they wanted to add tonight, that we keep the public hearing open and that we pick this right back up again in the next meeting. Does that sound reasonable to commissioners? Because we have other business to do tonight. Is that reasonable with staff?
Yep. Our, the staff report is a first round review, so there will be more to be added to that staff report, so I do agree continuing the public hearing might be beneficial.
Applicant? Please, yeah, please, if you don't mind coming, yeah, for the record.
Chris Smith, on behalf of the applicant. We have certainly no objection. We're well within the statutory time periods. It will enable us to generate some responses. I know we have the holiday, but we can do that. And just for the record, it will be December 7th.
I believe so, yep.
Here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. Just one of those notice things.
Yep. Yeah, and the only thing I have to ask is if, if you can, if you had some other demonstrations of facades that you have developed somewhere else, if you can bring them along just to show us, that's all.
That's what we were sidebaring on, and we apologize.
No problem.
We didn't mean to interrupt anybody.
No problem at all.
Just, the last speaker, Ms. Turner, had brought that up, and we were just talking about that and pulling some things up. So we'll do that. Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Okay.
We'll pull those off.
Thank you. Entertain a motion. First of all, we're going to keep this public hearing open, but I'm going to entertain a motion to table this item.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lefakis. All those in favor of tabling this and keeping the public hearing open, signify by saying aye. At the record show. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and our best to you and your families over the Thanksgiving holiday. We'll see you on the 7th.
Have a safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Just give me a second here to get my notes together here before we move on, okay, guys? I'm out of sequence.
I know.
Okay, let me get my, give me a second. Sorry. I'm all over the place here. That's page one. That's page two. Okay. All right. Now we're moving on to public hearing. Well, it's not really a public hearing, but it's PH 3065ZA. I guess I'll just read this. So PH 3065ZA, 113 Brainer Road, request for an extension on filing of a zone change from R 33 to BR. Fast Track Realty LLC, applicant John Ferrera. Owner Matt, 36 lat, 237 R 33 zone. I see the applicant is not here. Staff, if you want to just, I think we all got the letter from Attorney Landelina.
Correct.
Basically, there was some medical issues going on, they've fallen behind schedule. They are requesting a one-year extension. I think, my personal opinion is, I think the extension is legitimate. You know, and I'll honestly, I voted against this zone change, but be it how that is, I do believe the extension is legitimate. There was some legitimate reasons why the applicant couldn't come through on time. Having said that, I'm not comfortable with a year. There's going to be a new planning zoning commission that's sitting here in January, come heck or high water. I'm agreeable to if someone else wants to come up with a different figure, but I'm not going to vote for a year, to be quite frank with you.
Either two months or six months.
Somebody come up with something here.
I could see, because it looks like it's really out of their hands and into the Army Corps of Engineers' hands, and God only knows when they'll get their decision, but I'd say six months.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like six months.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we extend this for six months and then revisit it at that time.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley, to grant this extension, but for six months only. Any discussion on a motion? We should do a roll call on this.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Linda DeGray, four. Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Nick Lefakis.
Four.
Now we move on to, it was unanimous to grant that extension for six months. Now we're moving on to discussion on PA 23142, zoning compliance, staff.
You keep taking my thunder.
I can speak now, okay.
There you go. You're all set.
So I brought this to you.
Come on, that's not, come on.
I know, you know I'm only messing.
That's all right.
So at the last meeting, we discussed the Public Act Number 23142, which is basically about affordable and equitable housing, and in this case, in particular, the location and regulations for family and group childcare homes. So I went through it all, and pretty much we meet most of the requirements. We, you know, these are by right in our town, except if it's in multifamily building, then it's a special permit, so we will probably need to remove that special permit requirement. One of the bigger things that we have is that you cannot deny something on the merits of character. We have the word "character" in our regulations a lot. So I'll have to just go through, literally, just, you know, pulling up that word and figuring out where we stand with that. You know, for the most part, I think we're going to be okay, but I want to make sure that we're going to be okay in meeting the requirements of this act. And just as far as the operation of licensed group childcare homes located in residences, I believe that we appear to be compliant. However, I want to double-check. So what I'm going to be requesting is that we move forward with this, with a six-month extension, so we could have the time to properly go through the regulations and, you know, just make sure that we are compliant with this act. You know, especially we've got the holidays coming up, and, you know, so, and, you know, maybe we even add some other modifications to this. So my recommendation would be that we send the letter such that, oh, actually, I did give you a motion on the back of this. So basically, so we would do the study and modifications by May 1st, 2024, and most likely well before then, but that just gives us leeway.
You should have received this in your pocket.
No, yeah, we didn't, no.
You did not.
It looks like I'm missing a page. I'm not, I don't think we have all of it.
I only have, like, that much.
Yeah, we don't have the, right, we don't have the back, we don't have that last paragraph.
A whole paragraph that we're missing. Okay. All right. Thank you.
There we go. We just have right to there, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
So basically what you're, I'm sorry, Lori, I gave you a chance to sit back down. Go ahead. So basically what we're doing is, we're going to send something, so we get a six-months compliance. Staff is fully aware of where we're not compliant, thus the state takes precedent.
Right.
And you anticipate there could probably, unfortunately or fortunately, be a lot of regulations that might just need some text changes, which are going to have to have a public hearing on every single one of them.
Well, I mean, you could have a public hearing on a
Well, I mean, you could have a public hearing on, on a group.
On a group, yeah.
It's just that when I started querying "character" in our regulations, it's everywhere. So I just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases.
Yep. Any questions for Lori? Nick? Is there a motion?
Make motion to move staff recommendation to the town manager for report to OMP regarding possible modification to the Enfield zoning regulations in order to comply with PA 23-142. Said study and modification shall be accomplished by May 1, 2024.
Second.
So motion made and read by Secretary and Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seen a, probably should be a roll call on this, this is going to be an official thing. Letter.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley. Four. Linda DeGray, four. Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian Dantonio.
Four.
Nick Lefakis.
Four.
Okay, if the record shows unanimous for you to proceed in this manner, Lori.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
We all right?
Yeah, that was stupid.
You okay?
I went, yeah.
All right, moving on to other business. I, discussion on extension of filing deadline for special use permits is still going to stay on the table for now? Are you ready to report anything?
I do not. You asked me to put that back on for the placeholder, which was a good idea, so.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
So we're just going to keep that on the table. All right. Discussion on the 2024 meeting calendar, which we, as we said before, because we did pass another resolution earlier, this also coincides with the Act for Protection schedule. Everybody have that in front of you?
Yep.
I would like to make the suggestion again, for the upcoming year, that we do pretty similar to what we did this year, that we not have any meetings in August.
Yep.
That August be stricken off. And that the ones in December be, both of them be moved up a week. So instead of December 12th and 26th, they'd be December 5th and 19th.
Yep.
Just like, kind of like what we're doing this year. And I noticed they also, at least on my copy, they've included the January 9th and 23th of 2025.
Yep.
So is that agreeable to them? Look on, Nick, is that agreeable to you? Is that agreeable? Staff?
What's wrong?
Okay. Is that agreeable?
Yeah. The only other thing that I noticed is in March, which is the strangest thing, both Easter and Good Friday are in March this year. So Good Friday is actually the 29th, which is the next day, but, you know, I don't think that it's really an issue.
Is that an issue? No, I think we'll be okay with that one.
Yeah, it was the only thing that I had noticed that was not put on to the calendar there.
So I guess, I'll just do it since I have it in front. I'll make a motion as chairman that on the proposed calendar that was given to us by staff for 2024, we remove any meetings in August, that the December 12th and 26th meeting be moved up to December 5th and 19th, and that we also include the January 2025 meetings of January 9th and 23rd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Chairman Fiore, seconded by both Vice Chairmans. Well, here's my better half. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. If the record shows unanimous to change the schedule.
Perfect. Okay.
Now I have, go ahead. Any correspondence?
Oh, no.
No? Commissioners' correspondence? Go ahead, Commissioner DeGray.
Oh, I do have one. I received a notice from CROG that they were doing a training tonight via Zoom, and I emailed them because it was on housing. And so I asked them, would it be available later on? And they said yes, and to email them. So I'm going to email them, and once I get the information, I'll forward it to staff, and then they can forward it to everybody else.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It was good stuff.
Yes, it was. Anybody else? All right. I'm going to jump in here. Commissioners' correspondence, and I wanted, as I said I would, I wanted to go through everybody's terms and let them know what they need to do to proceed on the planning zoning commission. So I'm just going to go down the list here. Actually, I'm just going to go down the list if you guys don't mind, left to right. Is that okay? Commissioner Dantonio, you are all set. You had a four-year term, so your term does not expire on December 31st. You do not need to reapply. Commissioner Holinsky, you had a four-year term. Your term does not expire. You do not need to reapply. Vice Chairman Higley, your term does expire, so if you're interested, you do need to reapply. And by reapplying, again, you go onto the boards and commissions, and there's a link to reapply. You have to fill out the whole form that goes to the town manager's office. I'm not, Lori might even get notified, I'm not sure, but I think she'll be able to lead the town clerk in the town manager's office to get this. So you do need to reapply if you're interested. Vice Chairman DeGray, your term also expires.
Already done.
You're already done. Commissioner Lefakis, your term also expires. You need to reapply. I wish John and Frank were here, and Mr. Muley. I will, I'm going to tell him. Commissioner Grillo, he don't come anymore, so it doesn't really matter. Commissioner Lamo, I know you're watching on YouTube, or you will be, you do also, I did run into Frank, I informed him, he does need to reapply. His term expires at the end of the year. Commissioner Muley, your term also expires at the end of the year, so you do also need to reapply by going to the instructions that I mentioned. And Commissioner Petronello, your term does not, you had a four-year term, so you do not need to reapply. You continue right over. I've left myself for last for a very good reason. Two years ago, I was asked to serve on this commission by the then-new council majority. It was presented to me that my experience and knowledge of this town and its government operations would be very beneficial to this commission. I was then truly honored and humbled to be appointed by my fellow commissioners to be your chairman. My goal as chairman were simple. The first was to treat every member in our staff respectfully and professionally. This was something that was unfortunately clearly absent to me from prior leadership of this commission. Each commissioner here brings a unique perspective to the issues before us. I am proud of fostering an environment where everyone was free to speak, present their ideas and concerns without pressure or influence from me or from anyone else. The same is true of our staff. Lori, Matt, Rick, and Georgie, they are the finest in the area. The work they put in is invaluable. They are true professionals, and I am tempted to ensure that they would always be treated as such. My second goal for this commission was to ensure that every person or entity that appeared before us is treated fairly and honestly, and we were always acting with the best interests of the town first and foremost. Unlike what might go on in other elected boards or appointed commissions, I would not condone or tolerate anyone injecting their own personal interests, financial or otherwise, into our decision-making process. Elections have consequences. And it has become painfully apparent to me that my vision is in no way compatible with the new majority that is now completely in charge of this town. I cannot be part of a commission that will probably be pressured to approve most of the commercial interests regardless of its impact on the town and its neighborhoods, all to foster the illusion that doing so will save my fellow residents some tax increases. Unfortunately, I foresee that as a fallacy that will be pushed on this and other commissions going forward. I cannot and will not be part of that story. Therefore, regretfully, I will be resigning from this commission effective December 31st, 2023, like the other commissioners whose terms have expired. I want to thank you all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Lieutenant.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Now we'll go on to director planning report.
We're going to definitely miss you, and I
Well, we've got two more meetings.
You still have to come and visit.
And a Christmas, little Christmas party. Yeah, I have to, she's my chauffeur.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there you go.
I can't drive. Commissioners' correspondence, we did, anybody else for Commissioners' correspondence? Director of Planning Report.
So we had a new secretary three start this week again. Her name is Donna Richer, and she's working out great so far. She's a quick learner, and hopefully we've found our staff. So that'll be a good thing. And really, the only other thing I have is receipt of applications. And it's ironic, about two, three weeks ago, we had like three applications on our shelves. They are now full.
Oh, wow. All of a sudden, I kind of figured that was going to happen, because we kept hearing things were in the pipeline, they just never showed up. Yeah.
So to be received this evening, public hearing 3079, application of owner Kevin Ferguson for an in-law apartment at 78 Brainerd Road, R 33 zone, map 36 lot 293. Public hearing 3080, map amendment, application of Triano Properties to rezone property located at 17 and 21 Elm Street and map 26 lot 118 Elm from R 33 to BL Zones.
What was that, what was that, I'm sorry?
Map 26 lot 118. This is next to the, it's right, right next to the little office in the corner here.
Yep.
Public hearing 3081, application of Let's Grow Hartford LLC, doing business as high people for an adult-use cannabis, food, and manufacturer business at 27 Pearl Street, McDermid, Reynolds, and Glisten PC owner, TD5 zone, map 24 lot 78. So that's old Diana's Bakery.
Yep, yep, yep. We were wondering, we kept hearing, and finally
Yeah, yeah. They were silent for a long time.
We've been, we've talked about that, we've been talking about that, you know, and we heard anything, for what, almost a year? And it finally shows up? Yeah.
Yeah, so. And SPR 1924, 3 Palumba, application of Thomas Adam Oh, no, that's the wrong one. 1559 King Street. Oh, and I had that one there. Yep. Go ahead, just tell it.
So it's going to be SPR 1924, 1559 King Street, an application for a special use permit for outdoor storage. And we have another one for an admin approval also, which involves the outdoor storage. There's two separate applications for this address. One's a public hearing for outdoor storage, and the other one is an SPR for an admin approval for a change in their existing outdoor storage.
So one's actually, part of it is getting smaller, but other part is actually getting bigger.
Excuse me, what was the address again?
1559 King.
1559 King.
Yep, it's next to the highway, New Cemetery. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, there's, I don't really have anything else new to report. We're getting busy, good. What else is new?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. To adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Be adjourned at 9:55. Thank you. Good night, everybody.